6:12 PM and I'll call for order the June 1st, 2024 meeting of Manchester's Regional School Committee. We've just had our entire re-reception and we're now in business meeting, open session. We'll begin with public comment. Guidelines for public comment can be found in section BEBH and BDH-EP of the policy manual. Would anyone online like to make public comment? If so, please put your name and address in the chat. Is the chat open?
Chat is open.
If you're joining us by phone and would like to make public comment, you can unmute yourself, say your name and address. Okay, so no public comment online or on the phone, but anyone in person like to make public comment? Okay, hearing none, we will close up the comment. Chairperson's report. It has been quiet on school committee items since our last meeting. I have attended, as some of you did also, memorial day events at the different schools. We did have student advisory council this past week. We don't have student report tonight. But they're working on kind of defining their group and putting together some objectives and processes for what they're going to do next year. They will have their election for a new student representative here either this spring before school ends or next fall to complete their elections. So we will know as soon as, we'll let you know as soon as they do. She's not here tonight, but since we're talking about student advisory, I think it would be out of line not to recognize Diego Sanzón, who served for at least three years and maybe more diligently as a student representative to the school committee. My recollection of school committee is incomplete without him being part of it. And smart, civic minded, and just gets it even quicker than we do sometimes. I think his brother's here, he can relay all of this, sure, right? You got this? Thank you. He's been a great ambassador for students, a connection between our committee and the students. Your contentious budget conversations, you organized this thing, the student Q and A that we did last year, which was really a highlight for me as far as interactions. And he's just been a good colleague for all of us, and so we really do wish him well. We, of course, have had the graduation events. And really, my time has been spent mostly counting down to today because we have reorganization next. I was asked recently, or not too recently, but someone, so will you be letting go of your position as chair? And I thought, it's not my turn. Oh, and I've made it clear that I am good with this. Do you even know is my question, really? But we'll reorganize in a moment, so I'll take the chance to just say, this role as chairperson is to serve, serve the board, be a servant of the board. And with that, sometimes we have to do things that don't really prefer or bite our tongue when we'd rather not in the name of diplomacy. But I am grateful for the chance to have done it, and I'm ready to let someone else do it. I am especially grateful for the cup filling aspects of this, which would be things like like speaking at the retirement reception or to the teachers and staff on the first day. Town meetings. I like public speaking. I enjoy doing that even when it was hard. I'm especially appreciative of building relationships behind the scenes with our community members, administrators, teachers, and students. And I'm proud of my service. So it doesn't have to be bittersweet. It can just be sweet. And I'm good with that. So one thing I can say I will take from this is that I will know how to support our next chairperson really well, because I know what that means. So with that, I will close my final chairperson's report, and we will move on to reorganization. Thank you. So that we do this right, I have pulled the policy on the school committee, school committee organizational meeting, it's section BDA. I'm going to explain how this goes, and then I will turn the gavel over to Pam to actually run the first election. So the way this works is that there will be, Pam will open the floor for nominations. So someone will make a nomination, then there will be a second to that nomination, and then discussion, so that the person, they can say, whatever happened. If there are questions, they can be asked. Then that's repeated. If there are additional nominations, then after that, it will be a roll call vote. And the person who receives the majority will receive the position of chair, and then that person will handle the election for the remaining position. So are there any questions about how that's going to work?
Before you hand over the gavel, just want to formally acknowledge our thanks and our appreciation for all of your hard work over the last two years. I think that it's important to recognize that you've won your reelection during the same year that an override failed at the budget. That the override failed at the polls, and I think that that speaks so directly to your connection with our community. And we have been so grateful and so lucky to leverage that and to have that. Only that people who don't know Teresa recognize how much time Teresa spends on school committee aside from sitting around this table. It has very much been a full-time job for her over the last two years. We couldn't be happier to a patio. And our budget passed that year.
It certainly did.
Thank you. All right, pass it over.
Pass it over. I will walk it carefully over so as not to pull out the cords. So I will ask for nominations for the role of chair. I'd like to nominate Chris Reed as chairperson. It's their second. A second discussion. I think it's important what, for the discussion, is their second nomination or coming? When we do the discussion at the go, that's what I was understood. Okay. I wrote this up this time. And now I put nothing in the discussion. Nothing discussion. I think that it's important that the chair go back to a Manchester board member as a show to get this committee needs working together. And I think that Chris is the right person to do that. My nomination comes in with the fact that you served as vice chair, well, during my first year as chair, and it was a level of support. And also understanding our roles that I think will really benefit us and I'm confident in your skills. Any other, sorry, I have to remember now, we're getting to tape.
I would agree, it should be very interesting. Knowing how much time Teresa spends here, what do you think that you can contribute to? Is this manageable for you as a chair? Because there's a lot of projects coming up.
It is, yeah. I do think it's manageable. You know, I'll just need to reset some of, you know, my expectations. But I do think it's manageable. I do have time to do this. It may not be the same time during the day that Teresa had to do this or manage this, but I do think I do have the time to do it. And I'm also, you know, I think that the next vice chair will also be in an important role as well. Because, you know, unlike Teresa, I do sometimes have some trouble with work, so, you know, vice chairs would have to work, run those meetings if I wasn't able to. So I think that role is also going to be important this year, but I am willing to give it up to make sure that I could play the experience. I thought that a lot about.
Do you want to do this?
Yes.
The discussion. Any secondary nominations?
I would like to nominate Erica as the chair.
I'll second it.
Thank you, and I apologize for agreeing with this. If Chris, if you have the time that you want to dedicate to this, then I am happy to. I love the idea of sharing this. We didn't actually go through. I like building consensus. I think we have great skill here. I have a rising senior who is about to embark on the college application process and everything that your brains that I actually know how it goes. Probably if I didn't have the preview of having done this last year, I would be more ambitious in my time. But, and I am so sorry because I have been asked about this, and I have made a decision back and forth about 15 times. But Chris, I was like, you've made a decision in one direction, I'm rather than two, so I'm happy to see that nomination that you would have.
I definitely want that.
It's a big time, yeah. So it appears to me the vote will be, we'll still have to do the vote call, it's my last thing to say. So the roll call vote, they'll have to indicate your choice for, between the two individuals for chair. Correct? Because we have, I think she declined the nomination.
Yeah.
But we still have a motion in a second.
While you withdraw on the comments.
And I withdraw my motion. So then we're left with a single nomination of Chris Reed, made by Teresa, seconded by Kate, withdrawal of the nomination of Erica by Amy and Jake. So we'll do the roll call vote, all in favor. We'll start with, do you want to call the vote?
Sure.
Start with Teresa.
Yes.
Teresa Whitman?
Yes.
Do I have to say my name?
Or Kate Cook, some of us just saying. She's going to read your name, you say yes or no.
Yes.
Erica Spencer?
Yes.
And Lauren Johnson?
Yes.
Jake Foster?
Yes.
Amy and John Byner?
Yes.
Chris Reed?
Yes.
Okay. Can you use the gavel? Use the gavel. It's unanimous. Chris Reed is the new chair of the school committee.
I promise to do the best job I can.
And your job begins now. There you go.
Right, please repeat the process for vice chair.
All right, so right, yeah, all right, so next order of business is to repeat the same process to build the rest of the positions. So next up would be nominations for vice chair. I don't have any particular recommendations for this. I think historically we have had chair from Manchester and a vice chair from Massens, so before something for nominations.
I would like to nominate Jake.
I'll second that.
Or something for discussion.
I'll just say that the reason why I nominate Jake, in addition to having Massens as a vice chair to support you as Manchester vice chair, is I think Jake can bring a lot of education and leadership experience that can help us through the next couple of years. And also to build a relationship with Massens and to build a stakeholder.
I'll just add, if we keep with our tradition of shared impulsion to be, I'm very interested in that aspect of the work, particularly since, and Michelle, you've indicated that you're starting to rethink a little bit about what that budget presentation or whatnot may look like. And I know I've advocated for that, so I would like to help see that that play a piece through. Help to make it important that we reestablish a relationship to that town perspective, so.
I'm sorry, I'm waiting to your discussion.
Any other discussion? Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Kate. Second.
Right, discussion.
I'm nominating Kate, who also has considerable educational experience. And also has just completed with Chris the negotiations process. And I've witnessed how she has supported me in the last two years as chairperson. And I just believe that it would be a really good team effort, and that's just my personal opinion. But I know her skills and think that that would be a good balance.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something just about that as well. So although Kate and I might not always agree or have the same perspective on things, especially over the past two years working with her on negotiations, I've really come to really respect her opinion. She's usually clicks through, you know, topics, comes up with extremely valuable points of view, and I do think she would be valuable. Valuable as a vice chair. Any other discussion? Or any other thoughts?
I appreciate the nomination, and I would very much enjoy working to continue working with you. I agree that we have not always seen things the same way, but I think that that actually leads to productive discussions and increased perspective. So I appreciate that.
So with that, if there is no further discussion, then we will vote. So by roll call or by, okay.
You say everyone's name, and then we say the person we're.
I definitely am not right. Okay, so John Byner.
We'll appreciate it.
Teresa.
Kate.
Jake. Jake Foster. Annemarie. Eric Spencer.
Can you just come back? I have to right now.
Sure. Kate, on some. Christopher, it's not saying my name, that's Chris Reed, Kate. And then Erica Spencer, you can take as much time as you will.
The reason I'm leaving times is I think you guys are both being great for this role and for different reasons, and I'm starting to figure out which one of those should be best combined. I think I'm going to wait to just change my mind a little. I think I'm going to say Kate. I'm sorry, Jake, it's just because I think that you guys have worked together in a partnership that's worked and been really successful for the negotiations team. And I think sometimes form partnerships, that's why I'm speaking still, I'm sorry, I go again, but that's the thing that's my.
Okay. Kate is for vice chair, and then next would be finance or?
Like maybe so we can choose to organize our subcommittees tonight, or we can choose to do it another time, but that doesn't have to be like in the same way. That can be more discussion based and see where people are. I would be on Pam for helping guide part of that conversation.
Okay, so how many meetings do we actually have left? Because I would like to set this up before you break.
Since the last meeting, yes, unless we have a forum for June 18th, but I think last time we checked it on that, if people available. So our next meeting would be on this.
All right, so I will take an informal poll then. If you'd like to discuss this now, or do you want to table this to our audience? So I'll take an informal poll.
I think we can do briefly get a sense. It may be very quick. It may or not, but it may be quite quick.
Maybe, and we can all, to be honest, we can also change this up a bit. We're not sure exactly which positions we'd like to hold as a series. All right, so
maybe start with the ones where you don't anticipate change, like Jake's already, Ken would like to come up with policy or say a policy at finance. But do you anticipate any changes to the negotiations team?
I don't really know what the negotiations team does now.
Well, we have some outstanding joint labor management pieces, follow-up pieces, so that doesn't mean we're going to have to sit, you know, week after week in session. But we're going to convene subgroups to work and then need to call the whole group together likely to process through the final outcome. So I think we left on the list stipends, which should be getting underway hopefully over the summer. Then I think we also have let's say, the complaint policy was left as a JLM, and I think there's one other that's escaping. So there could be some more negotiations to be done, but fairly small work and probably follow-up work to the two contracts that have.
I'm happy to stay involved with that. It doesn't sound like it's a weak commitment. And I think that it's important for that continuity. I think that there's room also to do more. Not on the negotiations.
So I guess a easy way to do this would just, I guess, to initially ask, who would be interested? Somebody to start off, John, start with you.
No.
Teresa?
So I currently serve on the facilities subcommittee with John, and I think that's something that we might consider just keeping in place since we have the EES project in place. And I'm certainly willing to do that. I've done my time on the finance subcommittee. I learned what I needed to learn there. I don't mind not serving on that. I don't mind serving on it. I, I think that our policy and program subcommittee needs some direction and work. I would be willing to serve on that, but I would also be willing to. So whatever you need, I am willing to do, but I would like to stay with the facilities. Are you asking, do you chat to what Teresa just said, or are you trying to fill the negotiations bar?
No, 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 I was just asking, sorry. What would you, what would you like to, you know, communities would you like to serve on? And then we'll see where the discrepancies are, we can start discussing.
As I said, I would like to stay on the negotiations, but I don't think that that in and of itself is a full-time role. I am
Anyone else?
I am happy to do policy and programs, but finance wouldn't be a full-on effort for me, so.
Policy or facilities?
Policy or facilities. And that's definitely not virus.
Yes, if that's where I was supposed to, but that wouldn't be my choice.
I could say on the policy.
All right, Jake.
Interested in finance for readings, I've already stated, happy to stay with policy of programs that's useful. Definitely interested in finance.
And I think I would do the same, and I think I could stay on negotiations. Is it reminding that is a customary for the chair to also be involved in finance committee or how?
It has been, but because it has been, it needs to be. Sarah didn't. Listen, time to share time negotiations.
It is so.
Yeah, because I think finance, as you mentioned, is quite a lot of work to do.
We've set the meeting schedule to be once a month next year for both committees, just to try to avoid some of what we did this past week, which is so scheduled. Just so we can have a handle on our plan for the year, because we have to produce agendas and do postings and everything. So we're looking at first Tuesdays for finance and third Tuesdays for policy and program.
Can I also say something? Since a lot of people are just in finance, one thing I've learned from this program. I think it was only him and I think it's just you and Jake.
No, he just said no.
I thought you were.
On the facilities. Yeah, so I'm good on facilities.
Okay.
So I was going to say that if there's anybody else that's interested in finance, one thing I learned about the program committee, having three people is a given flexibility to have a forum. So we don't have to, it has been difficult, like with two people to train the people. So that is, we want to choose to have three people if you have people additional other than us.
Sure.
I would just suggest that with finance, it's a little bit different in that we have different towns being represented in that. So that's, that is a one argument for just keeping it very balanced. But I'm not here, I didn't, I think, maybe I didn't make clear to you, I am willing to not serve on finance subcommittee. But I think it's just the two of you who've expressed interest.
Okay. So
and I think then Teresa or than myself at all, it's rest interest in policy and program subject. Or you have a willingness. I have an interest in it, but I'm willing to do whatever's needed.
Sure. So is this, how do we actually determine this?
So I think from what I'm hearing, your negotiations are the same two people have interest, so you could vote on that group. It sounds like you have a decision to make on facilities because Erica would have interest in facilities and or policy. So hold on that one. Sounds like two people are interested in finance, Anna and Jake could vote on that one, unless I missed somebody expressing interest, then it's still a different policy. And facilities would stay the same. I know, facilities wouldn't stay the same because that has expressed interest. So you really could, you could vote right now on negotiations and finance subcommittee unless there's some issue.
So if I was to make a motion, I'll make a motion that Kate and Chris be in the negotiations subcommittee.
Any discussion? Take a, or call them, right, John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
And Jake?
Yes.
And I make this.
Try for finance?
Yeah.
Jake and Anna?
So we'll go by, we'll call again.
And so we need a motion first. Make a motion.
Second it.
Did Jake and Anna serve as a finance subcommittee?
Okay. Second, okay. Any discussion? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Jake, yes. I'll also yes.
Do you want to solve the policy and program first or facilities first? That's the chair's call.
Let's solve facilities first. It's more important.
And I, I don't, I, I interpret of what you asked me, where would you be interested in serving? I'm not to serve on either, so. Right, so I'm going, I will make a motion. Can I do that? Or do you want? With the chair is supposed to be for the slate to be voted. Okay. Could you bring the slate, Chris?
That's my.
I don't know if it really matters, if everyone's agreeing on, yes.
So then that would mean it could be John and Teresa that solves. So as a group, does that sound
Yep.
Like a good point, all right. So then, good.
So if Erica is also interested, can the facility be three people, just like a program, or maybe program become two people?
So right now, I think, and I'd like to keep it. So, right now, I think, you know, I'd like to keep it to two people. We can always see how that works. And if it doesn't, that being a situation where it's thoughtful, it's like, I think we can press that. Same.
And I'll just say that because of the N S B A approval, like that county as well, that complicates things. So it's actually probably better to have just two for that purpose only.
Throw up. Yeah.
So then, is there a motion?
So he has presented the slate. So now we think we make a motion? Then I move that John and I continue to serve as the facility subcommittee.
Second. John, yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
Erica?
Yeah.
Yeah. Jake, yes. And I'm also yes. So now we're at. Uh. Final, right? So who, let me again.
Program and policy.
And the policy is.
It'd be three people interested. Yeah.
Free state, Erica. Uh.
That was a three-person committee.
So, sorry. Well, you know. How did it work as a person to be a setup and a fence?
I thought there was a benefit, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, well, and is there a motion?
I mean, wishing to have Teresa shaping that Erica to be in the free game.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes.
John, yes.
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Erica? Hannah? Jake, yes. And I'm also yes.
They're all that great. Trying to choose the gal.
Yeah. Alright, so moving on to our consent agenda. So since I wasn't, uh, here on last meeting, I believe we need to break up for minutes and. What's? So, okay. So.
Or you put them together and you.
Uh, alright, so I'd like to make a motion to, correct me if I did this wrong, but make a motion to accept vouchers ten seventy-four to ten seventy-six. Uh, and a roll for five twenty twenty-four. As well as the minutes from our meeting of five twenty-one twenty-four. Is there a second? Any discussion? Right, and we will vote. John?
Yeah.
So all in favor? Anyone abstaining? Alright, so motion passes. Uh, moving on, we're gonna start with our subcommittee reports. And first up is facilities. So with, well, so is John and Teresa. Do you guys have a report?
No report.
No report, alright. Uh, finance subcommittee, again, any reporter? Negotiations, we have a report. And then for policy and program, uh, Jake, Anna, and Erica. We'd like to give your reports if you guys did meet, right?
We did, we did not meet. So this is not a report per se, but it's a continuation of discussions that we started last meeting, if we want to return to. Try to. Get some closure on one and input on the other. But, uh. Want me to start with the unenrolled? Um, so at the last meeting, I went through pros and cons of the. Request to have unenrolled students access, uh, sports in particular, but we expanded that to extracurriculars broadly. Chris, you were not here. So after, uh, some discussion and, uh, back and forth, I voted on it three to three.
I did read those.
Okay, so. If you've read the minutes, then I don't really think we probably need to go back and recap all the pros and cons, unless you wanted to, for instance.
This may be the highlights, just to make sure that I, you know, when you read it, it's maybe a bit too, so maybe just the highlights of the. Yeah.
So the the initial request was from a community member who was a student in a private school. That private school does not offer a sport that, uh. The student wanted to participate in. So they asked if they could enroll in that sport here, uh, at M E R S D. And for clarity, it was a middle school sport. So N I A. Uh, regulations, you know, don't factor in here. When we looked at it as a policy, uh, committee, uh. We. Tried to do it, uh, from the perspective of getting the yes, uh, you know, because we think one of the key pros is community relations and participation of community members and ear networking among students. The, as we looked at the considerations, the key cons had to do with a lot of unknowns around fairness, around equity of. Access by any non-enrolled, uh, student from the town. Uh, there was, there was, uh, concerns among the administration. Uh, about, uh, how to administer it and, um, and how to oversee, uh, those students, uh, if they're not held to the same. Consequences and and expectations that our own students could be held to, because we wouldn't have oversight of that student in the same way, of the, of the, of a non-enrolled student in the same way. Um, and, uh. In the context of middle school sports, which is the particular request, we have, uh, high enrollment numbers now. So to add to that. Uh, is asking a lot of the the teams and the coaches and the administration and, uh, could. Although the numbers are likely small, could force us into a situation where we need to determine, uh, who can actually participate in middle school just against our. Kind of, uh, inclusion policy for that. Um, so overall, particularly, uh, you know, given the unknowns and giving the concerns of the administration. Um, we came back with a recommendation from the policy committee of take no action. In other words, leave the current practice of not allowing. Unenrolled students' participation.
I just wanted to, so I was in minority on policy committee, so I'm not gonna say the whole thing. But Jake, there's one thing that you just said that I'm not sure, it's at least my understanding, which is. I don't think we would force any of our middle school sports into a position of having to be cut to the verge of accepting a non-enrolled student. I think what could happen is C A D in the event that a sport is oversubscribed or at its maximum would have to submit their space. I think the guardrail, guardrails that are placed for a program like this. Would be one that it's only available to students who don't have that extracurricular offered at their school. So when you think about the small handful of schools we're dealing with. And the fact that most of those schools have in general more extracurriculars than we're able to offer in a middle school. Um. I I don't think we're dealing with a ton of students who run race for this, but that my understanding, and I'm really asking this question, Jake, is that it wouldn't. We would never be opening the door to the possibility of, because we accepted a student from Leonard Card, there's a student problem within district that would be cut from our team.
That is not a decision we would make here, but if we choose to accept this, that is the kind of guidance that we'll need to figure out with administration on what are the rules and regulation and rules and, uh, and practices that they would follow. To determine when to open it up and when not to, that kind of thing would all have to be worked out if we said yes to this. Whether or not we leave all those decisions to Pam and her staff, or we make it as a policy committee, that has to be determined as well. Um, right now, there is no policy about this. It's just standard practice. Uh, we could not find another district that had had this practice in place or policy in place either. Um, so right now, the default practice, not policy default practice, is you have to enroll. So if we change that, then we need to think about. How do we manage it via policy, whether it's us determining that or, you know, charging Pam to determine, we'd have to figure that out.
Could you have a response if your community member, that question was raised? Um, so the, sorry, Toby. Are you good with me speaking? Just the chair recognition, I think you just speak. Uh, yeah, my, so last time we talked about this, my position, um, in voting not to take no action and to continue discussion was primarily because. If there's no policy in place, it's just nebulous. And so what? Where do we go with it? How do we solve for this? Whether it's for or against the specific circumstance, it is not really my goal is to. If if we're, if is there, the question was, is there a void in policy on this? Um, and there were unanswered questions at the time because what I had heard from, um. The person who brought forth this item was that there was another district, um, that was doing such a thing, but Pam did check with that district. And our understanding is that is actually not their practice. And so it may have just been lost in translation, hearsay, that kind of thing. Um, similar with, um. You know, whether or not students, whether or not this has happened, you know, in the past is different from whether it should have happened in the past. So, um, I've spent, you know, the last couple of weeks trying to think about that. And where where I keep coming back to is. The question that I kind of left Pam with last week, which is. Why not have a policy about this? Either allowing it under certain conditions or saying we don't allow that thing. And that's why I'm sort of in in the camp of. Finish this out. We can give the parent, if we're if we're going in a different certain direction and say this isn't something at the district that we think is manageable for our administration, our students, or or in line with our, with our, um, vision. Why not have a policy about that? And that's the thing that I, I want to know if there are unintended con- consequences, because there are other areas, especially when you brought up. You know, not just this being sports, but being all activities where this this could be an impact. So that's my main concern with the board is. Is there harm in having a policy one way or another? I don't know the answer.
Okay, so this seems to be moving maybe a bit more into starting of a debate. So. Uh, it's a, this is bringing up continued business, uh. Would someone like to make a motion to continue discussion on this or to reopen this at this point?
As the stance of motion failed, there's no change.
Right, so would someone like to make a new motion?
I will make a motion that the policy and programs committee consider. A policy regarding. Participation from unenrolled students who are residents of the district.
So I think we've already been charged with it.
Yeah.
Correct. We've, we are, we have brought a, uh, recommendation. I think we need to vote on the recommendation.
That was not my motion.
I I understand what I'm saying is that in essence, that needs to be done. It's the the school committee's already charged the policy committee with that purpose, with that vote.
And so we're voting on whether we will accept that we take no motion.
That we take no action, or, yeah. That that was.
So then maybe you want to make the motion that we take no action.
Sure, I will restate the motion that I made last time, which is the, um. This, I made a motion that, uh, we take no action, um, this request. Thereby maintaining the existing practice. Is there a second?
Discussion.
So my question is is really for Pam on this. I'm not trying to make things complicated. I just want to know what is the best outcome for this. It, is it harmful? Like, is there, is there some kind of loss in having a policy that? Says this, because then when it comes up in all these different formats, we've got something to fight to.
It's a couple of thoughts. It doesn't really come up often at all. It's come up twice in fourteen years.
Okay.
Um, and I understand the getting to yes, because we would like, love to tell this person that they can participate. Um. Our recommendation is clear. We've checked in with our attorneys. They're not recommending it. Uh, we reconvened as communities, Ames, Berry, Beverly, Georgetown. Our no, which is no, Rockport is no, Hamilton, Weno, and Marblehead all know. Those are the people that replied. Also, Bedford, Belmont, Concord. Rotten Dunstable, Patfield, Littleton, and Tinsborough. No. Two communities have got recent requests. They have not given me any greater detail on their goal. So it it does surface once in a brief while. I think if we do, if the committee is very feeling very strongly that we need to pursue this as an expansion of our responsibilities, we're only wanting to look at the authority of the school committee to. Admit students, because essentially we're going to be admitting and expanding the scope of our involvement. So it's a, it's a question to go back through our attorneys and just say, here's what we'd like to do. How do we get them?
Okay, so I think I was asking a slightly different question.
I wouldn't, I don't think we need a policy, because I think it's an accepted common practice. And there's a comfortability. At the administrative level of simply saying, no, sorry, we don't do this.
Can I ask what the the legal backgrounds were?
I'm sorry, you just had an exhausted look. It's the same list. Of what sounds very negative. We understand that it sounds like very negative and defeatist, but it's everything from. We're not certain that we would be insured for these students. Uh, students who participate in athletics have to have insurance. Does our blanket insurance cover students who aren't in our care? How do you manage the students on a day-to-day basis? Um, how do you manage student discipline issues, access issues? Now, you know, we can write, do you write a very tight policy to say that this children from this school or the. It it's so, it's a combination of it's expanding the scope of our work, expanding the scope of our responsibility, it's expanding the scope of our, um. Uh, student management domain. And we're in charge of, we're in charge of order. So we don't have a policy or school that we can point to that's doing this successfully. We'll continue to, I'm happy to continue to look. And if we can find a model to replicate. I just think we're in a situation where. No one who's going to manage this on the day-to-day is recommended on board. Can we take a vote? Let's think, oh, sorry.
Should.
Um, the the only, I I believe in this, so I'm just gonna say this. Um, I. Understand what Pam is saying, and I I keep going against the administrative recommendation is, but the other thing that occurs to me is when we talk about it's happened twice in fourteen years. I don't think that this is going to become the huge headache that it would become. You know, we're talking about a very, very small number of students who might avail themselves of this. And I think that it will. Implicitly, some of those benefits would counteract. What I don't doubt would be an administrative headache, but I think it would be a very rare administrative headache. So that's why I continue to.
Not to belabor or point to greater detail, but the first one wasn't, ended up being going to see our thing. It was vetted and the outcomes were determined through that. It's a fairly public legal battle about access to after-school activities in the middle school.
And that's helpful information for this decision.
And the circumstances were very different in terms of the profile, but it, yeah, no, nevertheless, that could be a situation we find ourselves in again.
Any other discussion or? Okay. Do we need to? Alright, so the motion that's on the table is to. Recite it again.
Say no action.
No action on this request, right? So, by simple. And I think so. Uh, those in favor? Take no action. Those against? Okay, so the motion passes. Uh, was there also something on the reserve policy?
Yes.
Um, so I don't know if you all have a chance to look at a new policy. I think the last time we presented it, it just did, we did the discussion about some of the. Sorry, some of the other items, um, like to make sure everybody feel comfortable. And if you have any other questions, we can always go back to the policy to. Edit more or whatnot. And right now, this is just a draft. So to highlight a few things on the policy for you guys to decide is the percentage of eight percent of the total reserve. Um, again, to define the reserve is the stabilization, uh, uh, full account and also the.
E D.
E D, yes. And E and D by law, that we cannot be more than five percent. Uh, but I think together, uh, between the two four. Uh, eight percent, that's the recommendation. Uh, another thing that is shaping on the reserve is to have, um, the stabilization to be used mostly for capital expenses. But with the school company's approval, uh, we could put it back to the operation budget.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, one, one question on the eight percent. Right now, it's drafted as a target, however you want to interpret that. Question, uh, came up and then Michelle, actually, uh, they have a few things to say about this, too. Should we put a minimum there and treat the eight percent as a maximum? Right, there's different reasons for having minimums and maximums, both for, you know, protecting our credit rating, the minimum side, and for town relations, the maximum side. Uh, you know, with the caveats of how we can use it as a. draft. So one for discussion that will be helpful to finish this.
Yeah. Uh, so first I just like to open this up to general discussion.
Yeah. And let's be clear, we're not requesting a vote on this.
Right, yeah. So any specific questions around this or?
I did have some questions. Where did the eight percent come from? What was the basis for that? I do believe that it it would be helpful to have a lower cap as well as a higher bound. Um, and then my other question was, in this definition of E N D, do we need that in the policy? If that's already, that's just its general law.
I can answer the eight percent. Uh, the eighty percent was to be consistent with our towns, Manchester town. Now is how we've gotten to eight percent. Originally fifteen percent, now it's eighty percent. When the reason is to do the three individuals. Um, both towns fifty percent of their budget goes into the state district. So what was that success? Uh, basics, I think it was still ten percent, right?
I believe it's still. But part of the part of the conversation that has been going on is to what extent can we rely on pounds when there is an emergency that we need more money than we have? Right? So that that's where the, I don't think anybody's recommending going above ten percent and you would not, there's no kind of stuff, benchmark for that. But the eight percent recognizes that uh, is an attempt to recognize that you know, the the money that sits in our reserve account ultimately came from the town. And, um, you know, we, if something happens where we need more than we have, or that we can't spend on a particular emergency, that we have the fallback of going to the towns directly.
And the E N D, should it be the language? Would somebody say no? Maybe Pam can show.
For, we don't think it hurts. It also exists in the transfer policy language, so can educate that.
I had the same reaction, but it seemed to be redundant. Potentially as a lawyer, I never like to see the same definitions repeated in different documents because it can cause confusion at times. However, I think as long as this is repeated accurately, there is some benefit from a new school committee being able to look at the policy, see everything in one place and understand that this is what we're doing and this is where it comes from. So that's how we can that we did discuss.
Yeah, the other thing this does, just to be explicit about it again, is this defines what we consider reserve accounts, which is a change from our past practice where we're using yearly revolving accounts as a reserve account, and we are no longer doing that through this policy. This would just be the true reserve accounts, E N D, general stabilization.
Discluding sort of passport choice and the facility rental.
Alright. Teresa?
I'm going to send my full comments by email. It could be better be more effective and efficient. I do like the idea of defining in here clearly what we're talking about when we talk about reserves, because that's something that has been continually difficult for people to to grasp. What I'm missing is the background for where this came from that we just haven't really had a conversation about. I hear that Manchester is targeting eight, but Essex is still at ten. And if you look at what their actual origin balances are, I'm interested to know where both our town partners stand on their balances versus their target and how that historically looks before we commit to saying something in line with what they're saying should be their target right now. Um, I'm also interested in having a conversation at the committee level about whether or not we need a defined cap at all or or target in that way where we have the state statute. I I'm interested in Michelle's input on this. I'm not going to put you on the spot at the moment, but I I would like to know where the structure for this came from. Like, did it start from M A F C? You know, from from an M A S C draft um, policy that we then adapted for our needs or or how that came to be? Those are things that would help me. You don't have to respond to them right now and I'll send my my full comments in. But I do want to understand a little bit more. Think probably in the interest of, you know, moving forward, we should respond to some of that. Um, I can say the structure of this came from a limited number of different reserve policies. Um, Michelle also did give us some of the feedback you're asking before she gave us and gave us into it in habit about this. She's obviously seen other reserve policies. Um, so were they, I'm sorry, were they like other school districts? Other schools. So that's the kind of information I'm interested in hearing what I wanted. Do you know what I mean? Like what? The same kind of questions that you'll ask when someone brings something up with what school districts did we look at? And that sort of thing. You don't have to answer it all right now.
Well, you're also going to be on policy.
Well, right. That's why, that's why we can shorten this right up and get like access to the folder. Why do I feel like I'm going to have the exact same?
I think what I'm hearing is this is your this is irrelevant because what we don't have is a common philosophy of what you want to accomplish.
Thank you.
I would recommend not continuing pushing it back to your policy subcommittee because the committee's done what it's supposed to do. It's turned over rocks, it's asked questions, we've debated. People have been really good at like, somebody writes something, somebody throws it down. And it's been a really positive give and take on it. But what we don't have is everybody at the table or a consensus around the philosophy. So I would throw the policy writing aside and get to what do you what do, what's you trying to accomplish with the, what are the goals for the policy? We even have a, we started a year and a half ago with goals for the policy.
Yes.
But this group needs to get on the same page.
We don't need to set that information right.
We're in that.
Right, you say, you see part. Right, but I I think what Pam's saying, I totally agree, um, is that that the conversation needs to happen here. So tailing it and doing it at some committee level doesn't make any sense. No, it's, we, I I do have to amity rate what Pam said. We have looked at a lot of things. We have really tried to answer, thought the questions that this committee was asking. So if if we haven't done it, uh, then then let's tackle it. Like, let's talk about rather than you said you were going to say comments, let's not. Like, what are, what are the concerns that you think are not addressed in here that we should be addressing? I would like to know what at what lower boundary would we be alarmed? What lower boundary should cause an alarm?
If it's too low, you're talking about the minimum.
Man, I'll say first, and I think it's important that we put a minimum in here. Uh, not only to, because the whole, the whole, to Pam's point, the whole purpose of us going down this road was so that we could say, you know, our policy is X. So we can't, in this particular year with these numbers in our reserve account, we can or cannot commit to putting money into our operation to cover the town, right? And we need a minimum to do that, right? A target doesn't give you that. A target, you know, basically says we want to be around there for various reasons. But a minimum actually says, you know what, we're approaching that minimum. And next year, if the town's asking us to contribute more in, you know, for operating, we're going to put ourselves below that minimum and we have now something we can point to to say, no, we really can't do that. It's going to harm us if we do that for credit ratings, for future emergency situations, right? All those reasons. So I think a minimum is important. And if we do that, then essentially the the eight percent becomes the maximum upper bound, right? And if if that's, if we treat it as a true maximum, then anytime we go above eight percent, we're essentially committing to putting that extra money into our operating the next year.
So that I guess, but that doesn't answer the question of what is that?
What is the minimum?
I personally if I choose, I wouldn't choose a minimum. I would actually say to to have it at eight percent, but if we had to choose a minimum, like the worst case scenario, I would say at least five percent. So between five and eight.
Well, at this point, this is starting to become more of a discussion where we should probably make a motion. So since we're not going to make a motion tonight, unless there's something just questions around what we've worked on as that, or something we can develop.
Teresa has questions.
Not right.
Um, I'm not, I'm not going to ask all my questions.
Yeah, you can email.
This is getting beyond a subcommittee report in it, but feedback. I'm glad to email my feedback. But I guess my my only remaining question is what is the best move forward then? Because Pam put it into words, what I'm getting, what I've been trying to get at is what I, my hope was along the way is to have these discussions during like the reports as we're going. Like, okay, this is what we've looked at and this is the thing we all need to decide for directionality. And then take the next step of of doing that thing together. But we we haven't, it just hasn't come together in that way. So do workshop.
Our intent is, this is what the, this is exactly what this is supposed to accomplish, what you just said.
Okay, so then I I would suggest we need to.
If I'm a committee member, I'd say no, eight percent.
Yeah.
No, ten percent, ten percent. I'm role playing. Yeah. So give that specific feedback and see if we can't take another crack at it. Uh, a minimum, it's important. It's not important. Maybe even take a straw poll. Um, there was language just used. Again, I'm not nitpicking or trying to be difficult, but does in excess of eight percent mean it goes back to operating? Or do we look first to our capital needs and advanced products? I know we're spending a lot of time on capital issues at the end of the year. So I think getting to understanding what the language means to the individual and then running through clarifications is important. I don't think you need to rush to get it. I know you haven't rushed, but we also haven't been dormant. It just, it's it's difficult because it's trying to do a lot of things for a lot of people. And maybe start with those three questions and then send the group back for another edit. Or say this is going to be one hour of time on August sixth. We're going to workshop it. I'll start the chart paper and try to get to some type of content commitments and then worry about how, whether we include the definition, how it gets shaped later. Those would be two potential paths.
Well, that was a great report. We should, in the interest of time, move on to the superintendencies and to be your goals in general.
Um, we're going to talk about the D F, the dip goals at the end. Is there any objection to moving mine to the end and getting the principles?
Not at all.
Doing the handbooks.
So continued business, uh, and book elementary and secondary, and book updates. Do you guys need any control or like, just something?
At least at the elementary level, we can just kind of explain. Um, it's been, it's been a number of years since we recommended changes to the handbook. Our the changes that we're recommending really are around attendance policies. So there's a nationwide trend post COVID, uh, chronic absenteeism across the country. Um, and so Desi's response to that has been to, um, put a greater focus on in our accountability formula. Um, so they talk about chronic absenteeism, uh, as as being absent from school for a period of ten percent of the school year. So in a hundred and eighty days school year, that's eighteen days. Um, and, uh, yeah, the handbook previously was there were different categories of absences that were a quote unquote excuse. Um, and so kind of at the school level, we're able to excuse certain absences of sickness. Um, it's sort of like, um, Desi now kind of treats all absences as people. Uh, I think their thinking is it doesn't really matter why you're absent. Your absence, we must say, of school. Um, so it kind of caused a lot of awkward conversations with families this year as we were kind of trying to pivot at at the force tools. Um, you know, we're trying to pivot to this new kind of way of looking at absenteeism, communicating with parents and families uh, when students hit certain thresholds, we're trying to avoid that eighteen day mark. Um, and you know, you would, I'd call a parent and we'd have a conversation about the absent, you know, the the absence, absences, and they would say, oh, but you know, they were sick. And it was actually interesting, uh, some of the different anecdotes that that we've got um, from families with, you know, a particular student who had, you know, this school year, strep, COVID, um, you know, surgery, you know? Most of them were very legit, uh, under our policy of excuse versus unexcused. So we wanted to kind of shift things from excuse and unexcused in light of that, um, to documented or undocumented. Um, the the high school, um, might be a little more depth, but just, uh, at the elementary level. Uh, you know, so so basically what we're looking at is documented absences would be medical, uh, bereavement, religious. Um, and then we actually do have in all the handbooks, uh, college visits or post-secondary activities, uh, which is really just at the high school level. Uh, so those would be things that we would consider documented absences. There's still that excuse, he was, uh, uh, when it flows up to Desi. Uh, it's not excuse in terms of our accountability form. Um, the conversations have been really helpful, um, with families. A lot of families have said, oh, my gosh, I didn't realize up here, um, they don't have that number already. Um, um, you know, I see what 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 Desi's trying to do theoretically in practice. Um, it is, you know, I have had some families who have called me, um, seven o'clock in the morning. We just talked the other day. I know she's at seventeen days, but she's at home vomiting. Um, I'm going to send her in unless you tell me not to. Um, so that's kind of, that's kind of been the message. And so that that's really the change is just in the terminology. It's a little more of an explanation of what chronic absenteeism is, you know, ten percent, um, and then just a different terminology of documented, uh, versus undocumented. And just a little more kind of explanation of of the state law. Uh, that that was, uh, that was something I had to, so I'm not sure if there's any difference at high school or maybe it's the same.
It's just, I mean, very similar in the whole reason behind it. It's the same, but we have, we have the additional kind of confusion of excuse and unexcused with what's necessarily documented or undocumented. So it was a little bit more confusing and we together cleaned up the language, um, along with we had Heather's help as well. So we were all on the same page about about that. So the same language kind of changed for us too. So instead of having those different formulas of this is documented, this is excused, it's just all kind of falling into the same category. And we do, we did add something in there. So it's instead of just college visiting, we'll put a slash there for the post-secondary activity. So we can make sure we're accounting for all of our students who are looking into something to do after graduation.
The process was helpful for us to align my practice into a line of coding and aspect, just to streamline a little bit more. Um, from a middle school perspective, I know you had a question about the change in the um, response to tardies at the six tardy students with recent attention. And having put that into practice this year, we're finding um, that it really needs to be addressed on a case by case basis. Um, for all families, the punitive approach isn't necessarily effective. Uh, more of a relationship based approach is really what will make more of a difference. And in some cases, it's not the student who's responsible for the tardiness. So we don't want to, we don't want to punish the student for something that's out of their control. So we're, we'd like to change it so that our new dean, uh, next year, Joe Janak, has meetings with students, builds those relationships, builds relationships with parents, makes those connections and, um, push it from that angle. That's not to say we won't still issue a consequence, but that won't happen as a blanket response for all parties.
And I think that that change, sort of the change we made in the handbook language, really align to put the Department of Ed's guidances around that collaboration with families, but it takes families to work with kids that are heading to school. Um, so does be able to change look like the middle school piece and just all of our handles in general to focus more on working collaboratively, collaboratively with families in order to increase student attendance.
Yeah, same thing at the high school. We do have our tardy policy. Um, Lou Strangard has an amazing job talking to our chronically tardy students and the whole point of kind of outlining all this is to build the relationship. So when the phone call comes home, it's not the phone calls coming home and now you're receiving this punishment. The phone call is always, this is what we're noticing. We want you here. We notice when you're not here. What do we, what can we do to help you get into school? And the same thing, we take everything on a case by case basis. And one thing we have learned over the years is, you know, if someone is chronic tardy, giving them attention doesn't fix the problem. If it's, if it was magical, then it would, it would be very easy to solve. So it's it's more nuanced than that. So it's difficult to put in a tardy policy, but obviously we're talking about human beings and we're talking about having, building relationships. But to start out with here, just know that when the phone calls do come home, it's because we're trying to build a relationship and help you with something so that it give you what you need so that the student can come to school and we can solve the issue.
So that it give you what you need, so that the student can come to school and we can solve the issue.
And then just the other piece that's important is, uh, prior to, uh, to COVID, you have, um, absence letters that would go home to families when they hit certain thresholds. And then during COVID, obviously you pause that. Um, so we, we've restarted that this year, so, uh, a letter goes home at five, ten, fifteen and eighteen absences. And they're kind of progressive, um, to let people know that this is where you are as you get closer to the, to the eighteen, uh, which is kind of. It talks about all of the things that we're saying about absenteeism and accountability formula, that sort of thing. Uh, so those, we started sending in the middle of the year, we had some tech issues that we were working through. So I, I really think starting those in the beginning every year will be really helpful, you know, when people get the problem, um, it's like, oh, okay. You need to pay attention to that, so. Any questions for us?
Uh, I have one question just about the high school, I said it wasn't fair to me. Did the tardiness policy change the same way the middle school did so that it's no longer? Three tardies add up to a detention?
It's not three tards that add up to a detention, I believe it's five tardies, Mr. Evans. Yes. And again, that will be something that, that's something that, that is polls. Those reports and usually when a student gets to be around three, we start having conversations with that, so we don't, we can try to not paint.
Yeah, uh, I'm going to just share that I, I received this question, um, surprisingly as a school committee member. I'll just share some feedback, I've gotten some parents. And I trust that you can, are dealing with altered parents, but some parents loved the concept. Some parents are trying so hard to get those kids out the door. So having a, an automatic and known consequence at three was, was helpful. And it, and now understanding that the reason I was getting this question was, wait, it's school, not actually doing that. But kids are getting the consequences that I keep threatening that they're telling me to get.
Yeah.
Um, so I think, uh, I just think it's, it's food for thought. Because I'm sure that for some families, you have to be treating, you know, recognizing individual situations.
Yeah.
For others, there are families that, that really love that black and white, so.
Right.
Just sharing, sharing that thought. Right, for the detention, they were looking for that like. And we had detention this afternoon, so.
There was, it did have, even in June, we have detention, I don't know, good, better, different. There was detention for tardies this afternoon. Um, are we just discussing attendance or are we talking about the other?
Uh, to that, so elementary, that's, those are our changes, so.
And I have a question about elementary attendance. Uh, the language in the middle school thing. Yeah, the language in the middle school absence responsibilities is almost identical to the elementary school one. And I was. It made me feel stressed out as an elementary school parent. Now, I'm only a upper elementary school parent, but if my child were say in second grade and I was reading. And after they've been out sick for a week with COVID or something, that. Um, students are expected to confer with teachers and establish a mutually acceptable timeframe for the completion of missed assignments, classwork and tests. That I would be having like heart palpitations at home if I thought that I was going to have to make up a week of second grade at home with my kid.
Yeah. Obviously, it's, uh, developmentally dependent, um, and so second grade teacher would, would prepare. To kind of identify what the kind of must do's are. Um, obviously, if they're at the same school, where there are certain assignments that have to be turned in, in very early, so they usually kind of massage that. Um, into what's reasonable and necessary.
So I, I think one of my points was on that same point. I felt there was a lot, there was confusion in all of them about when a parent should confer with teachers. And I, and elementary was certainly one of the triggers for me, but even at, even at high school, like, and the languages, you know, at least when I first read it, you know, one was like. Don't ask the teacher before you go. And then the other one was like, you know, if it's unanticipated, then you can ask, right? So I think maybe just clarifying the language a little bit about when parents should confer or students should confer. And what role does, um, you know, Google Classroom play in that now where, you know, parents and kids check whenever they want, right?
So.
Doesn't have to be on the teachers.
Right, so when we talked about the, the confusion there, it says teachers are required to provide score in advance of planned absence. That was the paragraph referring to like people, students who are going on vacation, students who are going to, they're anticipating, I'm going to be up next week. And that sentence is in there, just, you know, because if I'm going to, you know, I'm going to be out the week before vacation, what do I, what do I need to do? I'm going to do it now, and I think we were, that sentence is in there in response to teachers, getting invited and stuff. I can't, I don't know when I'm leaving in two weeks yet. So the planned absences is where that language is in there, we're not required to provide, to provide it in advance. Uh, but then the unanticipated absence is. Like it says, it's kind, it kind of is a contradiction, but that, that sentence was in the paragraph of when you are intending to be up for, and it's the extended period of time. We can't expect the teacher to just give you the work ahead of time. Um, and then I forgot the second part of your question, but oh, Google Classroom, you know, it's always a good idea for students to check Google Classroom, but. Especially in high school, not everything's on there, which I'm glad about, because I don't want my students to be able to make up a course with a piece of paper. I want it to be, you have, you know, we need to make this lab up, we need to have a discussion or it needs to be something further. But it is always an idea, and it's the teachers when they are, you know, to check Google Classroom, Google Classroom, see what they can do. But we need to have, because again, not everything is on there, it's tangible, it can be done there. They mean that they need to appear activity, or we tend to students here tonight for their civic action project. Do some things that aren't just online to.
All right, so, uh, if, if you can clarify any of that in any way, that'd be.
Okay.
I think, you know, what we're saying makes a lot of sense, it doesn't come across.
Okay, that's good to know.
Feedback from this group, should we just be as direct as to say vacations will not be. People planning on vacations should not anticipate work ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yes.
If that's your reason.
We don't support the vacation. But I also, I feel. I really struggle with this because, um, as a parent of a child who has been chronically absent. Um. From COVID, from the stomach bug, from broken bones, like for completely legitimate reasons. Um. My expectation or my hope was that he would be able to complete score at home. That there should be some minimum standard of work that can be done at home. To minimize the learning loss during an extended absence. Um, and I wonder if in the post-COVID world, we are going to be living. In the space where there are more absences in general, where people are being more careful about cold symptoms. Or people are being more careful about, um, immunization family members. And so if that is just like an unavoidable fact, what can we do to support our students in minimizing that learning loss? While they're out.
That's where Google Classroom will come into play, so I think at Jake's request too, we could put language there about referring to Google Classroom. But also connecting with teacher on assignments that may not be linked to that and making a plan for that in a realistic way over time. And not overloading students when they get back.
Right.
I think we can, I think at the elementary level, for sure, I guess at other levels, we can have, so, you know, language about extended medical access.
I remember my brother bringing home that packet when I was sick, your teacher sent this home.
That, that is the, that is the practice, yeah, but you just, you don't have it. And, and it's kind of a fine line, uh, because a lot of things that you're describing are what Jesse is trying to move society away from.
Right.
You know, um, I actually was talking to one parent, she said, oh, geez, we, you know, if he, if he has even like a little sniffle, we keep him home. Because we don't want to get anybody else sick and, you know. It's like, it's a fever, it's vomiting, that's, that's the sickness, uh, threshold. So, uh, but we can certainly add some things to that, if, you know, like you were saying, with extended medical absence, you know. COVID.
I, I do think we are trying to do two things with all of this. One is communicate that there's a relationship between the school and the parents and what we may accept and know locally. Or through our relationship with your family. And really get and support where you're at is all only good, but the state doesn't recognize it. And we're, and we're, we're putting money toward our detention, which is going to be knocks on accountability. Right, because they're going to count those days, whether or not it's the most legitimate, understood, crazy series of events in a school year. It's going to rack up as we're not getting. So I think it is trying to do exactly what John said, if we was still.
I was going to say, in the fall, we'll be back for some accountability data.
I had one minor thing I wanted to add, and this is just in terms of like, in general, I think we're all better off if people read the soundbooks. And I'm very sorry to say, I have soundbooks very often, or at least in, in the world I'm familiar with. And one thing I think that can sometimes, um, discourage families from reading it is when it feels like it doesn't apply to them. And so when I was, um, reading the elementary school one and I saw the example of college visits.
Yep.
It struck me as obviously not a problem that you have it there, but it struck me that maybe that is the type of thing that. Uh, causes families to inadvertently tune out and say, this isn't really about me. So, uh, unless there's some reason.
We're being recruited.
Unless there's a reason for like Desi's standards that you have to have that language, maybe just, you know, striking that provision, but help people feel more like they're talking to me.
I think we're trying to just be aligned, like be aligned, be together in that. When the language is the same, when you get to the middle high school, you're not seeing just different language, but that makes complete sense. I, 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 there's never that.
True.
My, my input is just that, uh, I'm sad to hear that this is the way it is now. Because one of the beauties of having a small district is that people know each other, they understand each other, and that we don't have to do it to a number. And, um, so I guess my input is, thank you for being willing to take the input on, from all of us on this. And also being mindful of may versus will in terms of these detentions and that sort of thing. Because there's a lot of value to, um, to the, there's been value to my family. When we have chosen to do a thing like a vacation as a family at this time, and to have the support of the people there. Who are doing it four times a year, different story, but, but just to be able to have that, um, that relationship makes a huge difference. And that's what, part of what makes our district special, so thank you for finding balance with that. We tried to go.
So is this something that we are voting on to like, or is this something that this point leads to?
Technically, that typically, actually, the handbooks are approved at the school level, but we have had the practice of bringing them. To get, to all be on the same page.
So about, uh. I'll make a motion that we. Handbook. Uh, and respectfully request that some of our input may be added to.
Can I have my, I, my academic integrity definition first, if I change that before you prevent?
Sure.
I'm just really proud of this because this was a school council thing, so I had additional changes with just language and dates and things. But and the progressive discipline charge is kind of on the same page of making connections. But the school council tackled the, um, the task of coming up with the definition for academic integrity. And we, we noticed that in that plagiarism section, it just goes straight to punishment. And this is what's going to happen when we catch you, and I, we kind of had the conversation, well, what does that even mean, academic integrity? So we came up with a definition that was with school councils, we had students, we had teachers, we had community members and parents all working together on that definition. And we brought it to the teachers and we're adding it in there. And I think what we're trying to do is not change all the handbook language, but just change the, the, change the narrative of. We're not, it's not about being punished or being punitive, like this is what we expect of you, we should be able to define it. Especially when we're talking about vision of the graduate, we should be able to define what it looks like to be someone with academic integrity. Here's what we expect of you, here, here is what's, you know, if, if we just, if you've not been practicing academic integrity. This is what, if we use the word may, this is what may happen. But I was really proud of that and I wanted to give a shout out to school council as well. And the same thing with our progressive discipline, there was just a lot of change to be more about what does the student need? And more about conversations, bringing in the teachers, having more conversations at an early level. So that things don't escalate to further that, you know, up to a higher level. And we're hoping that this will just foster a lot more conversation amongst other stakeholders and parents and just bring everyone in early. But I just wanted to say, our academic integrity definition, I love it.
Can I make ones, can I just, sorry, I know that we're beating the horse now. I'm just going to follow up on her comment about the college visits and suggest, I don't know if this is straight from Desi, but suggests that. Um, school visits might be relevant at all levels. And so if there is a eighth grader who's visiting, who's shadowing at a boarding school per day. Or a third grader who is moving out of district and they're going to go visit their new district school per day. Then those are relevant and, um, similar in nature, so there might be space for wording there that would be more.
In terms of.
Thank you, sorry.
So you guys got the intent on that much, is there a second? Any discussion? I just show a hand, so. Right, any notes, perfect. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your time. Okay, uh, so next on the agenda is, uh. In a point twenty-four budget item, uh, so string the budget to actuals, transfers, so that's, you Michelle.
So. This was sent out late in the packet, I do apologize. This is one of the casualties of the, uh, mid-year start, trying to figure out what was done before. Um, so made it a little complicated, but basically, we have our year-to-date budget report through May fifteenth. Uh, at that point, we were seventy-six spent in our operating budget overall. And then we're eighty-six percent through the year, so I just wanted to mention, you know, for you as well. Feeling, um, our largest payroll comes up at the last day of school, which is equivalent to basically two months of the teacher's payroll. So therefore, that skews the percentages all from the entire year. Um, so we do account for that, and that is in the column, that's called additional expected or. Additional projected expense, so all those payrolls are in there along with all of the other expenses that we're anticipating. Um. So we look at that projection, um, one thing I did want to mention, which is typically a volatile cost throughout the years. Are out-of-district tuition costs. This year, I know that Avi had mentioned earlier on the year in his projection in the fall, that it was over budget, where we had anticipated for the year. Um, this year, overall, it's about three hundred thousand over our budget. We did get a one-time circuit breaker reimbursement, they had a program for, um. Additional reserve, which was two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, which absorbed most of that cost. And sixty-one thousand, we will be able to fund ourselves. Corresponding expense with the out-of-district tuition costs is the transportation costs. Since COVID, transportation costs have just skyrocketed. Um, something that might have cost us a couple hundred thousand a few years ago is now costing us close to a million or they're, they're. So our out-of-district tuition, I mean, out-of-district transportation costs are about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over. Um, I'm sorry, that's fifty thousand, fifty-two thousand dollars forward. Um, we are anticipating we'll be able to make a free payment of our out-of-district tuition costs, which is something that we've historically done for many years. Um, projected that to be at least a hundred and fifty thousand each year, so for next year. So that's a little bit of an insurance policy. To be able to give us a little bit of a buffer for next year. So when all that is said and done, we take a look at our major categories. Our personnel side of the budget is in the yellow box, our expense side is in the green box. And so basically, we are needing to finish the year taking about sixty-six thousand from our personnel side. And transferring that to our expense side. And so these, this does include the free payment, it does consider some of our here at capital items. And some of our technology purchases, so we're just trying to plan the best we can with what we have left, which isn't a lot. Um, but to do the best we can with it, so we are asking that you make a motion to approve the transfers total in sixty-six thousand dollars. Any questions?
First, uh, let's make that motion, things that we can discuss.
I will make a motion to approve a transfer in the amount of sixty-six thousand dollars from the personnel side of the budget to the operating expense side of the budget. For the detailed categories listed in the budget to act. I will make a motion to approve a transfer in the amount of sixty-six thousand dollars from the personnel side of the budget to the operating expense side of the budget for the detailed categories listed in the budget to actual report.
And I'll second. So any discussion?
I really like this format. Thank you. It's easy to digest. This is all standard.
Yes, this is what we do.
Just recommend. So I think, sorry, I think this is. The seventy-six percent of the operating budget that's spent so far, I think what might be helpful is to also compare to last year's year-to-date. So we can see, because it's hard to compare the eighty-six percent and seventy-six, so compare to last year. And the out-of-district expense of the additional two hundred and twelve transfer, is that normal to pay the following year in current year?
Yes, yeah, we have done that.
And then in the transfer of the budget request, we still have a negative four hundred thousand from school choice fund. With school choice fund, because we are supporting or fronting the field, right, our school choice is down to close to zero, right? So how would the negative four hundred change?
The four hundred thousand was voted in the FY twenty-four budget, so the year we're currently in, and that was to offset the health insurance cost. We did the same thing in the FY twenty-five budget as well, and that has been taken, the FY twenty-four has been taken care of this year. FY twenty-five money will come from FY twenty-five. So again, the current year, we did spend it down, but that was prior to this year.
Okay, it might help. We get school choice payments on a monthly basis.
Yes.
So that's the revolving nature of it, so we're getting compensated for it. So even though the past, Michelle said the cap was drawn down, we continue to receive payments beginning, beginning of this year.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I will take a vote, all in favor? That's enough. Thank you, Michelle. Next on the agenda is the open trust annual district contribution. Competition.
Other competition. Bring them in.
So I'm not sure if Cam wanted to speak to this.
Um, we can tag team, how about that? So this is a follow-up to the presentation, to the work that Donna first did on our behalf to work with town. This is the Highland Field Advertise. This is just our annual OPEP contribution. We're a little early. Sometimes we're not doing this until the summer after we've had a chance to clean things up, but we were ready to go this year. So this is similar to what we're just saying about school choice. This is what we book in the budget as our annual contribution, which will never, it will be a miracle that's ever exact what's in the line item in the budget. Because we have a formula that exists in the contract that works to determine the actual payment based upon any savings from. We go back to the time in which we implemented OPEP. And there's a formula that follows the savings we would. It's a savings based on what we had versus what we transferred to, which we both have savings. And it's very complicated, but that's how we provide the number. So Michelle worked the formula, I do not. And this is just a memorialization of the transfer.
I was impressed by the vote.
It's a.
I'm totally impressed.
I don't know if I captured, there's no simple way to capture it, but there was a long-term assessment of what had been.
Yes.
So do we have a motion to?
Most of the OPEP contribution, does this go to Masspring?
Yes.
I can't, I actually have to stay, sorry. My husband is a financial advisor at Masspring, so.
Motion to approve. The, the motion to approve a transfer in the amount of six hundred and five thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars from the operating budget to the OPEP trust fund.
So any discussion? Just to confirm that's basically the number we put in our budget?
Yes. A good thing.
So all in favor? Any opposed? The extensions? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Highland Field Advertising Rate Schedule.
So this is the follow-up to the good work that Donna first did, and then Cammy's follow-up to prepared in selling advertising for the spring, for the fall. So these are the proposed fee options, and typically all fee, setting of fee comes to, setting of fees puts this one twenty-four. So this is the proposal. Michelle worked hard with finances with. So, yes, if you have any comments.
Cammy and Aaron did survey all our neighboring communities, districts, to find out what they're charging, and they seem to be very comparable. This will allow for lots of great one-time non-referring costs, such as improvements in capital nature in the athletics realm. It will also go into the revolving. The, the one, one season structure of six hundred and fifty dollars and the full, full year or two seasons of one thousand fifty dollars. As they requested.
So someone can make a motion.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question before we do that? My understanding when we accepted that request was that we were charging the policy committee to work through the policy before we took much more action. Just want to clarify what we actually voted, because part of that vote literally said, we charged the policy with looking, we charged the policy subcommittee with looking at policy for advertising.
I don't know that that was part of the vote.
Yeah, but I went back and it says it in the motion. And I know we've been waiting, you know, we waited until the town took its vote, and so we haven't had time to work on it since. But it's been on our list to look at the policy, because we have a policy to accept advertising or not. We have no policy to manage it. Like, for example, who, you know, do we, do we exclude anybody, right? If certain companies of certain types wanted to advertise, do we say no? Who gets discounts and under what conditions? Where does the money go? Right, there's, there's a whole, and maybe the policy is that the administration should develop it. But it feels like there should be a management plan for this, right, rather than just, who, you know, does, does staff go out and actively solicit? Right, or are they waiting, or, you know, if the booster goes out and solicits, somebody complains, what happens, right? There's all kinds of situations that feel like should be thought through before we're out asking for money or collecting.
So I think for this particular vote, I think it would be fine for us to approve this, and that would take care of, or you know, supersede any need for a policy. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't still look at a policy, but that also might, and you would not mean that we need to not take a vote on this today. So something to consider. You know, again, as you had mentioned, Jake, right, maybe it needs to be a policy, maybe it doesn't. But I think at this point, we should be able to, in the in terms of being able to accomplish the intent of this for the fall season. I think we should take a vote on this now. If it's something that we even need to take a vote on, or simply.
It's setting the rate.
Right, but do we even need to take a vote on that necessarily? Or is this more like a vote of?
No, we need to vote, we want to, definitely want to vote on the rates. And then we can talk about the policy concept. So I'd say vote on the rates, and then we can talk about maybe the next step.
So I'll make a motion to approve ban fees of six hundred and fifty dollars for a single season, one thousand fifty dollars for two seasons, and a discounted rate of one hundred dollars per season for Manchester Six Youth Sports Organizations.
And I'll second that. So any discussion?
I'll just say I'm going to vote against this because I think it's too early. I have nothing against the rates. I think the rates are fine. I just don't think we should be out. Yeah, I don't, but. I think it's too early for us to be posting this kind of information or make a decision about this until we've got through, particularly the discount part of it.
Any other discussion or comments?
So I actually don't remember what the motion was last time, whatever it was, but if the motion was to have a policy in place, I agree that we should set up some rules and boundaries before we move forward.
So I just, I pulled up the policy from that. So if, if you're saying that the, the motion we made included a specific charge, I think we'll want to re-review that and see that. But the policy we currently do have in place says that no advertising of commercial products or services will be permitted in school buildings or on school grounds without permission of the school committee. So we effectively gave one-time permission was what, was what we voted on, wasn't it, as presented to give permission to do that thing?
So, so again, my understanding was that we were charged with policies that would affect the management of advertising once we accepted it.
I don't remember that being.
So.
Yes, this is. Nope, this is March, February sixth. Since February sixth.
Maybe that was the date I looked, found the notes.
Yes, I think. We should continue with the low on the structure and trust in our administration that they're not going to be putting up logos for anything questionable at this point. Feel like we need to work on a policy regarding that. We can do so. I don't think that it should preclude us from from moving forward. Generating.
If it helps, I think this would run very similar to advertising in yearbooks or playbills. In terms of what is and isn't accepted in powers. Just a general. And we don't have, we have never had a policy regarding that either. I say that it's a good thing or a bad thing, it's, that's, that's how I would see this in the same target with this. I agree that it's reasonable to move forward with this. So to prepare the fees and then to follow up and see whether or not that was the case. Because my, my recollection is that we wanted to do that thing, but that we were approving this as a one-time, you know what I mean? So I want to make sure that we're on the same page with that, that we take it.
I agree, Simone. So we will take a vote unless there's any other comments. So Russ will see. Raise hands to show that he approves of the rate schedule. And as opposed. So that passes five to two. Next on the agenda is the district improvement plan and the year update. Thank you for waiting.
She just, just. So we'll start with the district.
Start.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm bringing it up. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little slow. This will, we will be tag teaming, and everybody will have an opportunity to kind of speak to the pieces that they were running point on, just starting with, of course, everything's, everything that we're reporting on tonight is based in the execution of the improvement plan, which is in support of a strategic improvement plan and our overall vision. As a reminder, the district improvement plan isn't just our local wants and needs. But it, it also takes into account our federal and state responsibilities, so something like accountability based on attendance, should we make its way into this? In our ongoing student data collection, the local needs assessment, as well as kind of the guiding force of the strategic plan. So this is just a little reminder of the structure, in that we set the plans to inform not only the district work, but then try to create coordination between the school improvement plans and also the educator plans. And I think living document is critical. So we're seeing some things you probably saw in our notes, that's things that seemed to make a lot of sense two years ago, aren't proving out to be, to make as much sense to us now. Or seeing through our growth and learning that there are different ways of tackling the problem that are more aligned with some of the things that we may be trying to achieve. So a living document in that, I think we're continually tending to it and trying to address our stated objectives, but also being mindful that we may need to modify our approach as we go along. So some things that popped on the list in terms of federal and state mandates that we are presently wrestling with and may not have been thinking about two years ago when we originally formed the plan is the tiered focus monitoring, and you're going to hear us for kind of repeat a couple of different things that are happening in terms of overall district evaluation and the tiered focus monitoring, or what used to be called the coordinated program review, which is our major compliance piece on that. I'll look at all our special education laws, as well as our, our titles like Title Nine, Title Five, and civil rights, that, that type of oversight by Desi. We, we are in the middle of that now. Our onsite review will be next year. So while we have our list of local to-dos and wants, time will have to be allocated to addressing those needs. You'll also see in my report that we did get, didn't have this when we were putting the slides together, we'll also be going through the district review process next year. We were, we did hear from the Department of Ed at the end of last week in the differentiation day, that we have been asked to participate in the district wide review. So we will be learning more about that for the end of summer, but that will be another, another piece that will take some time and attention from us. But I also think yields some good information as we begin to tie up our next three-year district improvement plan. It will be in the third year next year. So between the tiered focus monitoring, the Desi district review, as well as the ongoing elementary NEAS accreditation process, we should have some really good inputs in terms of informing our next three years. And that's how those three-year cycles are built. You'll see the, the chart and graph that you got, that kind of shows what our focus areas were, the big one that kind of goes through and follows codes where we are on things. If you recall, last year and this year are pretty heavy in deliverables with fewer in the third year. Meaning the third year is kind of a catch-up and round out some differences that we've been working on, and also be collecting data to inform what our next round will look like. So HQIM is also something that's on the federal and state mandates list that we'll be working on, attendance accountability, the Student Opportunity Act. You, you saw our plan and what's been filed there in the I E P improvement run. So I guess I'll ask at this point if Heather or Allison want to comment on their pieces of that, or their power of impact. So if there's anything, you know, just kind of keeping it kind of level, what's important for the committee to know in terms of how this adds to our list of things to do and may draw down on things we want to be doing in terms of what we have to be going to satisfy requirements.
Do you want to go first? Sure, I, I would, my piece I would just say is honestly, a lot of what it does is it complements. Sometimes it, these additional processes take more time, but then they also give us a structure and a thoughtful way of going through it. So, you know, that continual improvement work, while these are going to take time and energy and effort, it also provides often a structure or an evaluation routine through which we can look through some of these pieces that they might be entering through a different lens, but a lot of them are really going to help to continue. a lot of them are really going to help to continually form the work that is built into the strategic plan is from the the curriculum instruction assessment ones.
And the two things that I'll comment on are the tiered focus monitoring and the IEP improvement project. So the tiered focus monitoring process is very much policy oriented, arguing compliance, are we following certain policies, some procedures that Desi sets forth in these areas? And it involves a review of student files, a review of documents and policies that we have in place and it has, Desi has actually dialed back on this some of the special education document policy review, but they do have us do an extensive review of student files in certain areas. The English language learners has been an extensive project and very time consuming for me over the last month or so, but it is soon coming to an end and then Desi will visit and interview us about our submissions. And then with the IEP improvement project, we probably talked a little bit with you or Pam has before. Essentially, we have a new IEP format starting this year. I I agree with Jesse, like their goal is to make it more student centered, to have more opportunity to integrate parent feedback and vision. And I think they've done a nice job with that. We're looking the form. We've done a lot of training around it. And it's under the larger umbrella of a strike-based approach and using just looking at the way we structure learning environments to support all students. So it's, we've done some universal design for learning training as leadership team in line with this and we will be rolling up this year. So that's been a big focus this year and and will be next year as well.
And I think we're aware. I think something that's on our radar screen is just the direction that Desi's going. The commissioner stepped down mid-year. We have an interim, it's, you know, seasoned and carrying on with the game plan that's there, but new leader, new direction potential, or it could stay the same. So I guess it's a question mark for us. So we don't know if that will, what if any impact that will have on what's asked of us at the district level. But we do know we're going to need to tackle the revised educator evaluation remarks. And if you did take a peek at some of my notes on the goals that I had set to work on this year. We're beginning the preparations for that at the leadership level. So similar to how we started to prep for cultural competency by getting our leadership team knowledgeable, up to date and prepared to lead the work at their level. We started this year with work with the leadership team around spending more time in classrooms together as a team, starting to work together to develop common look fours. We'll carry that forward next year with a little bit more of an intensive observing and analyzing teaching set of sessions throughout the year in preparation for launching So it's a good time with our team to be doing that work, but also a good time to be hitting the reset button on how we do the work, how we calibrate the work, what we're looking for in classes. So that we're prepared to implement the new eval works. The new eval works have started to pull in a lot of the work around cultural competency and inclusion. That's been going on at the state level and required. So that that will be new and the major, I think, is being emphasized going forward. So that's just kind of a vision of what's to come and what we're starting to think about as we prepare for our next series of improvement goals. So there's four major strategic initiatives. If you take them apart, you have three that are really focused on curriculum and instruction. And one that tends to focus more, our fourth one on operations. So we've divided them out for the purposes of our conversation tonight. So you know, we're working on establishing and fostering authentic, creative learning environment and also integrating social emotional learning into all aspects of the day. And celebrating and nurturing an inclusive and diverse school culture. So I think what you, what you, what we hope you saw in our layout of where we are in progress on some of our goals under these headers is that Strategic Initiative Three had the highest success rate and the fewest deliverables. Two came in second and one is the one that needs the most work. And if you think about where we were when we entered the district improvement plan, we were already midway in work on two and three. So they're starting to fade to fade to the back in terms of where we're grounded and we're implementing and we're expanding our reach and our teachers' reach by using our leadership's learning to leverage growth at the school level. And you're starting to see authentic learning emerge into the four as our primary work for the coming year. So we did see, I think you'll you'll see in some of our notes, transitions played a little bit of a role from our perspective in our pace of being able to implement on some of the on some of our deliverables. But I do think we're making solid progress. I think our seventy, eighty percent completion on our deliverables in the second year. Which should put us on target for complete, for full completion by the end of next year. Our goal is eighty. My goal was eighty for the year. So a little bit shy of that, but I still think a a good effort and good progress could be made with good foundational work to take on nation next year. Anything on, I'm here that's jumping out to you guys that you wanted to comment on? Kind of just summarize that. I don't want. So just very quickly, the overarching theme, curriculum review and development, supporting and transitions and community connection. So we we sat down at the table and we said, okay, think about the the year. What comes to mind is some of the common themes and these were the ones that were on all of our list in terms of the things that we found ourselves working on, speaking to, or managing through throughout the year. So Heather, do you want to give a little commentary on curriculum review and development?
Yeah, I think a lot of these pieces, I think Pam said it really well. It became clear that the work was less like new learning and more how are we taking the learning that we felt that the system have done and then integrating it into practice. So and that's a little harder to measure on sort of a deliverable, but it is something that is a pretty significant growth. When you're, when you're tackling new topics. So I think those pieces are definitely reflected in a lot of the curriculum review development. And then some of the other pieces where some of the system shifts with literacy, adoption and implementation at the elementary level. And then that that restructuring of what does it look like when we're supporting students who might need some additional academic or behavioral, social, emotional support. And the growth and the shift that that program has taken place over the last three years has, so all of these pieces, right, they become the C Dalls that they support and interact with each other. And and I think that piece really came through as we're looking at the the tangible pieces in some of that and those focused areas of two and three. So there's there's some really tangible technical pieces like the building of the MTSS instruction routines, but then also the less obvious pieces that are a little trickier to measure are moving towards that level implementation and integration that is taking place. They just kept coming up in my conversations in a celebratory way. It's exciting to come in and see and they keep hearing like, let me tell you where we were a few years ago from teachers and from staff and administration. So I think it's a, it's a great celebration to have to be at that point.
Celebrating the things that we've already done and then also looking forward, very exciting. We are looking at higher instructional objectives for next year. Are we on track for that? Have we posted those positions? Are we getting? I want to celebrate.
They're all yeses and. We we don't, I just want to get us too far off track. Because that could all go in the bucket of supporting. I I do want to talk about it because I think that's one of the issue, that's one of the items that emerged during the year that wasn't anywhere on anybody's plan that we we addressed. So I think it's worth the conversation, but we just stay on track and then yes, sorry, go back. Okay. So just on the supporting transitions piece, I think that's both supporting actual leadership transitions, which have breathing your life into work in some instances, given us a whole new perspective, but also slowed in terms of implementation in some areas. So you'll see on the chart, that's more quant quantitative in terms of what we've done and haven't done and where things stand, that part of the, one of the projects at the secondary this year was mapping. That the team, even if they wanted to, was not in a position to begin digging in and and mapping with their curriculum teams. They had to put energy into just getting to know the lay of the land. They were first time principal, assistant principal in a new building. So it was something that wasn't ignored. It was something that had to be reprioritized. So that's an area where we didn't quite hit the mark that we wanted to, and that will turn focus to next year. So supporting, supporting transitions and just getting people acclimated, I think has been an all-around team effort and and one that has been successful because I think our, all our new members have had successful first years. And then we have some surprising community connections that we were ahead. That that's one of the goal areas that we kind of saw that coming to fruition in twenty-five. But just by luck of different opportunities that presented themselves throughout the course of the year, we were able to start up the Arts Council, I think is one that we put on the list, which also kind of goes into the rethinking bucket. There is the group of town, for some reason their name is escaping me, but they're the Arts Council in town. They've done some outreach and we're trying to forge a bond with them. We've re-partnered with the, the county by group out of Gloucester around wellness. So there's just been some really great opportunities to restart relationships. And a lot of this is fourth year after a pandemic, there, things are really coming back into line. And even rebooting things like Cape and Combs. And trying to get more meetings going again with the chamber and our legislators. We did one. So those were some themes and now just a little bit more meat on the bones and then well, too long. So Strategic Initiative One is basically the curriculum instruction. Okay, I think that piece what we were realizing here is that the Strategic Initiative One, I would say, you know, this is a bit of my transition and spinning my head around what an identity look like, sound like, need, what is shared understanding? That for me was a big growth area. So you know, my transition of learnings and like listening to understand where we were, probably put some pause on some of this. And it's exciting because it feels like we're really teed up to really lean into this in this upcoming year. There's a lot of effort planned on that piece. So within that strategic initiative, the deliverables that are either fully completed or are on track, what we would expect them to be are including some of the pieces that Pam has already highlighted and noted, like NEAS, well, well, the elementary schools went through that in opportunity at the elementary as that opportunity to structure itself, study. It's not done. We're going to actually have a site visit in October. We'll get really rich feedback from that. And then it will allow us to set those goals of a help to continue to form that ongoing work. So the the submission, which is an incredible effort by our elementary leaders, our teacher leaders and the educators completed that submission, that is something that will be continuing into next year beyond. Multi-tier system of support. Again, it's, it's, you know, there are aspects of it that are completed, that are deliverables and continuing to grow and expand into next year, both in the, of what we're talking about when we're thinking about the social emotional and attendance in addition to the academic and vertically we're expanding up partnership into middle school, we're beginning this conversations now. Pam highlighted some of the community partnerships, the, the restart, the wellness communities and other pieces. We've had a lot of re-energizing of some community connections and also some partnerships that we're fostering and building, which is really exciting. And the professional development plan, what the teachers received two weeks ago was that focusing of what that next year will look like, feel like with those different pieces, including summer learning opportunities, focus areas for next years, both that are complementing the work that we've done here and also targeting some maybe shorter term needs based on student data or student data. And then also projecting into like what structures can look like in the future. So so a lot of that is helping us toward that authentic learning and really centering that in what that, and that as our driver for this upcoming school year. The piece that's in progress up behind is the secondary curriculum maps, but I don't, I don't want this to there are secondary curriculum maps. The reality is that those are not tasks that you check off the list in our effort. So those pieces that that work has been done and it might be that things have changed or staffing has changed or course pathways have changed and need revision and updating. Or it's possible that standards have shifted and some of the apps need to be revisited. So while there are maps, it's that again is one of those ongoing pieces. So I don't want there to be a, I'm assuming that there are no maps, but it's more that ongoing maintenance, updating and revision.
I think the intended maintenance this time around was to look at, look at inventory or existing authentic learning opportunities. And identify areas where we need to either move things out and change them for the future or areas where we might have gaps in opportunity. So that's, that's why that's under permission.
And that piece too, you know, that that paired complementary opportunity is, you know, like the week we get out of school, there's an opportunity for like doing it, just teachers opting in their own summertime already into having a PD training on what does in three days learn to look like, sound like, and teachers who are already like opting in and excited. So there's a lot of great potential coming up. But yes, we're, this is a place that there's a lot of opportunity for growth. The piece would be considered and I think that framing is helpful is what it doesn't mean is it's it's a no or a yes, but it was a a pause in our pathway. So there was, there was a pause for the coordinator position that we had that space and opportunity to shift into using the Arts Council structure to let us deeply examine what is our current arts and culture programming look like, sound like, how does it measure against some embedded group or tools and guided through a process with Desi in partnership as a network with other districts. So that's actually allowing us to then move towards quantitative measure of where our programming is and then lets us set goals. So that will also help us to inform what does that authentic learning look like, sound like, and then how do we make actionable steps in arts and culture across our district and across our classrooms. So.
And I think we just honestly, and this is my, my learning experience is that when we said arts coordinator, there were a lot of different versions in people's heads of what that was and what it meant and what the intended work of that individual was. So even though we did, we drafted a a description, it in further conversation, we're finding it was really putting the mark. So I think we're learning more about the problem we're trying to solve as we delve deeper. And that's why something like the ARX Council was a, was a, I think, a really smart reconsideration because it's going to give us a better perspective of what we're trying to solve for and how if we can get the resources for that position, how we can structure a position that really can help us achieve with the perceived deficit. So.
And the next piece just to share is so that connected to Strategic Initiative One. So this is the various schools and levels last year worked defining what does authentic learning mean? It looked like at an elementary, at a middle and a secondary level. And then there was some work last spring to bring those together. We revisited that as a leadership team as well to really make sure is the same what we, what it means for us. What does it mean for M E R S D as a district and and what is our expectations are moving towards it? So this is, this is our working definition as a district and and as we learn more and grow more, you know, there's opportunities for us to come back to this piece. But this is that definition that will be driving a lot of that work in those focus series next year.
And Strategic Initiative Two, still more out of the curriculum office. And I think we've we were able to launch the SEL teacher leadership model. This is a model that was outlined in the original ESSER grant where we will be looking to find two kind of keepers of light, if you will, at each of the elementaries and the middle school. So these are K eight roles charged with being kind of the people staying on top of the ruler research and any new implementations, training new people and working to ensure that K eight has a coordinated approach. What we did find is high school doesn't quite fit the mold. So we need to figure out a pathway for there. They are using pieces of it. It's just not, it does not seem to be able to be applied in the same way, just because of the way the days are, the days that student time is structured. The SEL needs assessment is ongoing and we will have, Kim is leading, has been leading that effort and she will, we will have a report out in the fall. We thought we would coordinate it with the school improvement plans, they come up in the fall. And the MTSS handbook is on track. I think, I I don't want to steal Heather's thunder, but I I think if I'm hearing her correctly, they need to finish building the model before they can order one set in handbook. So figure out bits and pieces, but.
And it's, it's become a bit of an iterative process, but we think that we're doing the same thing. And then we we have these, you know, an opportunity to have to do some deep data analysis process. Oh, that is a little different. Can we seek to understand and clarify what we're looking for? So it's become this great, you know, what are those shared practices and then we can go deeper and deeper. So it's becoming really refined and helping us to get really precise and making sure that our students are getting what they need. There's a consistent access. There's a consistent access to supportive resources across schools, across grades, um, that we're being really effective with our practices. And we're using a lot of the guidance, I'm guessing has a lot of really great guidance around M T S S. So we're actually using their M T S S self evaluation to work where are we kind of considering all aspects of this programming? So it's moving us through in a really comprehensive manner, not just what's a score, who gets how many minutes in really thinking in a cohesive way. So, um, the work is there, um, but it's, it's actually, we, we've got a lot deeper than I think maybe we had originally thought we would. And it's giving us a lot of opportunity to ensure consistent practices and, and build confidence.
Want to just keep going with M T S S and give a little bit of a snapshot from the vertical team, what it is, it's kind of where we are.
Yeah. Yeah. So this has also been a really great opportunity, um, to build that vertical conversation and connection. So as you know, um, we're in the second year of a vertical diagnostic assessment that allows us to look at data. Um, and student growth and student performance K per date. So having that consistent data set that multiple times a year, um, in, in then also having started to build this historic trend of student performance using that tool. Will let us continue that conversation further. Um, and in partnership with the middle school leadership, they're looking at how have they traditionally provided intervention services? And how can we move it through with our students coming up for experience? That M T S S process of that tier dimension, make sure they're receiving supports in that tier one within the classroom, that tier two with the custom teachers. And a partnership with interventionist, someone that's targeted intervention at a tier two or three level. How is it provided? What information is used? How do we know what the need is? Um, so the partnership, well, it's, it's slightly delayed. There has been a team created. Next week, we're actually having a vertical meeting where we're bringing in middle school staff, collaborating with elementary staff to start the conversation of a transition. Both students and practices, um, and Joanne has been, um. Taking a really active role in re-examining, looking like, how does that sixth grade structure and teaming allow us the opportunity to build in that space? As those students are transitioning, especially with that M S A as that, that almost like a learning, uh, really open and flexible learning space for that. So there's a lot of great potential. There's a little bit playing in the sandbox for all the different ways that we could try to make sure we're doing that. And how are we using frequent data review to make sure we're supporting those needs? So, um, while it hasn't, it's not done, um, we're in a really good spot to be taking it to that next.
I'll just call for parent ed series was successful in that we got it off the ground. We offered, um, a few sessions throughout the year. I think we're still struggling with participation. Joanne was a real, Joanne in the middle school council really took a, a lead role in this. We thought offering online, um, opportunities would drive up participation. Not where we would like it to be. So I think that's something we need to continue to, uh, look at, study and, and see if there are different ways that we can create outreach. One thing that we think would be helpful, but depending on who's presenting or offering the workshop, is it always available is recorded sessions? Because we'd be cutting into their verdicts if we just reported it as an operative. So I think we're, we're happy that we got it off the ground. We're aware that it didn't quite meet, um, the participation rates that we had before. So work to do on that. Um, and then the S E L scope and sequence and assessment is slightly different from the needs assessment. In that, um, again, it's that documentation of where we are in the assessment is designed to, I think what we're getting at in there. That's different from just the general kind of where are our holes and what work do we need to do is how do we assess the, um, the impact of the things that we're doing? So what's the long-term way in which we measure? Whether or not our S E L model is having the outcomes that we need to. So we continue to put some work in there. And then three, and this is. Where we have done some reconsideration. Heather, I'll give you first crack. Is there something that jumps out that you wanted to comment on?
I think this is that piece that what, well, the, when this, when this was being originally written. And now I think this is probably a place that a lot of understanding of what's effective in the field has shifted. So even though there may be some deliverables, I think there's also a shift of, you know, having these conversations and understanding that a big piece of it was getting over that barrier of having difficult conversations. And maybe people felt vulnerable to have, we're now at a point that we also understand to actually be thinking about cultural competency. It's not just about symbolic gestures. It's, it's about making sure that we as a community understand what is culture? What does that mean? What does that look like? Who's with us? Who, whose voices are not being heard? And then how do we bring that in? So I think a big piece of this initiative has been an increase in growth that it's, that it is not just, um, symbolic days or transitions. Although those are important and critical to celebrate publicly, but that our growth and understanding has shifted to really thinking about what does it mean? When we're doing a curriculum review and how are we analyzing for equity, using an equity lens and that component? But what does it look like? A big piece of our administrative council that we share that going into classrooms or what are indicators of cultural competency? When you're in a classroom and teachers and students are in there learning Spanish or learning math? What does cultural competency look like, sound like in those rooms? So I, I think a big piece of this initiative, there's, as Pam mentioned, that a lot of growth made, but I think also the understanding is that it's, it's, it's far more than a few. A few days or a few pieces, but really how we approach things, what are we looking at and, and who's, who's in the groups with us, adults, families and students.
And I think that's where the equity audit and consideration came in. I think when we started crafting goals around this equity audit was very, is a popular discussion point in a lot of districts. We were advised and it's since become less common to do it because it, it, it doesn't really get to where you're trying to go. We also realized, um, we did a kind of a, I won't call it a mock version. We did a smaller version of it. Of inventory with the community last year through the school councils under the, um, state of supported schools, state gives it for schools. We were given a tool by, I, I think my members talked about it. We were given an assessment tool, um, from Desi. And each of the school councils tried to implement it with small groups at the school and the feedback was not positive, is very cumbersome. Uses a lot, I mean, we, I, I can even hear it with us now. There's just a lot of lingo and a lot of the lingo was baked, baked into the questions. A lot of the questions to your point earlier around the accountability issue. Everything's applicable, but a lot of the scenarios that they're looking for feedback on, we don't see. In the day to day. So it, it didn't seem as a fit. So between inputs from Michael Eaton on what we could do, the experience of each of the school councils. We started to look at how do we, how do we get at this information in, in a different way? And Volble in the, the Volble Plan at the end of this, survey data is annual. We, we get it. It's there for us. We promoted more to raise the numbers, but we think we can find the information, um, in a, in a tool that already exists. So that's, um, why we reconsidered, um, that particular issue. Any other comments or?
I just, the only other piece I would say as well, is there's nothing that's behind or in, or listed on here. It is continuing as part of the work next year. It just how, where it lives and how it looks will be a little different than learning about it to applying it.
And I think we'll just, before we move into the, to the finance and operation pieces, I think just trying to keep this visual in mind that those first three initiatives really work. In harmony with one another and with two and three now providing some of the conditions under which we're going to attack on, um. On the authentic learning piece, um, because the tools that we've learned and we continue to build capacity around that are embedded in two and three. Are allowing our teachers to now pursue the more interactive learning. So with that being said, the next, the visual as we transition into four is that the curriculum instruction are kind of the top of the, the pyramid. Operations and finance are what hold them up, right? So having stable, reliable financial basis allows us to plan, invest, continue momentum. Um, and pursue our goals and objectives. So.
Skip this line. Did you do that on purpose?
Really? No. Okay. Sorry.
That's okay. Did you want to share? Um, this, this was just another way where we're thinking about the other things happening, right? So the strategic plan drives our work and the district improvement plan gives us that roadmap of deliverables in our school improvement plan or on a more narrow. You said we have all of these goals in the continue work on top of the day to day, making sure that our students and our staff are taken care of and engaging in academic. Happy learning environments and moving forward. And there was a lot of other really great things that were taking place this year that we thought were just weren't. Well, they wouldn't have fallen anywhere. Um, they definitely helped us continue to move forward. So, um, the history, social science curriculum review, which is, um, uh, it's a long process. And actually just having some conversations with the teacher team this afternoon about it. Um, and two competitive grants, both for the investigating history and the justice education have clearly helped us to continue to push that work forward. And, and they're helping us in plan for next year's, um, next steps following that curriculum review. We've mentioned that wellness committee rejuvenation, getting that up and started and ready to go for next year and some of their goal setting then. The professional development has been a lot of new opportunities tried. And this is a shout out to these teacher teams, our professional development committee of teachers across schools, levels and roles. Who've had a lot of ideas about how we can build these opportunities and cycles for ongoing professional learning. Would I geek out about that all night? And I won't, but it's been really exciting to try different things. So having a comprehensive, um, website where you can go for anything you need, some opt-in opportunities. And, and renewing partnerships with external professional learning providers to make sure we're staying current and connected in our work. Um, the high dose of tutoring that we've shared with you, both grant provider from Desi and also that we upped in, um, at Essex. The E L A curriculum mapping to place at the elementary level to continue to build that career experience across both schools, also creating vertical pathway. And, um, a shout out to our secondary world language department who had an incredibly intensive year. Jesse, after following the release of the updated world language standard, they created these learning modules. Because the world language standards, it was not just when you teach things, it's the like, how you teach it, how you assess it, like full reset on this piece. And so this team went through, um, these really robust training modules as a team to really build in their understanding of that foundational knowledge. Um, and three of our staff are going to, uh, network conference late June. And then so they've all had the module trained, they've hit that piece. And next year, we're going to be moving into the next phase of that curriculum review process, think about what is currently in our programming. Um, what needs to be maintained, what needs to be, you know, revised, and then what is missing that we can build upon? Um, and what does that look like for what we have and also where we hope to go with returning some programming that we've had assisted previously, but in a way that's aligned. So a lot of other things, I would.
Like initial feedback on the high dosage theory?
There's, there's, um, small, we get ongoing data to, to let us monitor. I haven't gotten that just, you know, we spend delivering that if it's, you know, things like that. I, I can talk about that. I, it could be going down a bad hole. So we, we've been working with two partnerships about it, but I'm happy to actually. Write like a summary of our experience about it over this year to share back, um, with people what worked, what didn't. But they were both approved partners with Desi to provide that targeted high dosage tutoring following, um, research.
Wasn't sure if I just gotten a little feedback from either parents, uh, you know, any feedback at all.
Is it a hither or a miss was the group, right?
I would say I've had, I've had mixed, mixed feedback and experience. I think the level, the content and, um, the, the age mattered. Um, with varying levels of perspectives of success.
Oh, yeah.
Now, budget as foundation. All right. Sorry. No, no. I just don't want to repeat the whole thing. I think you know where we're going with this. Um. And I guess I was surprised where we landed on initiative four, because it sometimes feels like we haven't gotten the big prize. Which is a bit of a letdown, but yet we've accomplished everything we wanted to in spite of. So if the goal is to get, our number one goal is to get a correction, which we didn't achieve. So we've kind of gone around and tried to get there another way. I think it's a, I, I'd like to talk with this group and it doesn't have to be tonight, but what do we want to do with that objective? Is it one that we need to reconsider or I'm placing it right now? Or is it something we think we, we have to pursue in the same way we pursued it before? So the MSBA piece, um. Some of this is pre Michelle. So central office job descriptions and hiring and the restructuring all kind of all came together. So all the positions now have current job descriptions. I would say the two left to take a look at. All positions that have been hired for in the past two years have new current descriptions. Um, Allison, the student services and superintendent job description are there, but they're, they're older. They can use a look. Um, operations and maintenance planning is going along. I think our goal is to come up with a, a simpler format. We have maintenance plans for this building and now one for memorial school. They are large. So is there a way to synthesize them and make them simpler to follow and kind of ensure that they're fed into our day-to-day work in a, in a more. In, in a more user friendly way. But that work has continued on track and then, uh, the interview of staff and to identify potential operating and financial efficiencies. That was a big part of our, I mean, it is every year, I think, um, some years more so than others. But I think you have a, a, an example of how we go about that, built right into a budget materials. Reserve policy, I didn't, I wanted to give us complete and on track, but. I think it's more, I think we're more on track. I think it's, I think it's the top one. It, it just needs to be worked through and it's a group effort, um, and, and we're going to get there. Uh, in the reorganization, the curriculum support, uh, that's the stipend group that I mentioned earlier. It's a J L M. That's another one that's behind and in progress, but simply because the TA had to, uh, contract, which isn't anywhere on here. Had to take priority, um, this year and just, you know, it's the same group of people trying to do all the things. So, um, it's just some things that simply had to be re-prioritized, but we're hoping to get a jump on it this year. We can talk, think about when we want to talk about, um, budget funding correction as a goal. I think given where we are and, and the things that have changed, just in terms of the landscape of the budget. And the bigger projects on our list that we may be looking at a multi-year approach that doesn't include a correction. So what are some creative ways to do our attack going forward? And this was just, I basically just said that we were able to really get everything we wanted out of the F Y twenty five budget by using our efficiency. And I think it's kind of taken on a negative connotation of late, but that, we use that term just to talk about continually looking at. What's out of date, what can be trimmed, what can be moved? How do we reinvest in ourselves by finding savings in, in areas which could stand to evolve in the way that they're structured? And by through that practice and being able to deliver right around to, you know, it's 2.9%. We were able to re, real maintain the program that we have now, set the table for bringing back the pieces. That we want to, as we build the program to support them and also do something like hit an immediate need. Which is let's get those instructional coaches because we're seeing things in the data that we think. That will provide help with the call. So I think we're in a good, believe it or not, a decent position financially, even though we have some structural problems. Or structural issues to, to let us, I've been saying to resolve. And then everything will be found, um, on the web. The quantitative chart and the, the color coded symbol or beyond charts are all loaded up there already. And you can take a look back at, at Y twenty three. So all the words for questions.
Yes. So you can fill in order if you have a lot of questions or can just start the showcase.
So interesting. I, I only have one question and it's actually a really easy one. Thank you for Allison. Way back at the beginning, I guess, I think, let me just scroll back. It's like the screen is frozen. The, uh, the new I E P and all the training and all of that. Has there been an opportunity for our now newly reformed C P A to get any extra training with that or to participate in any advanced understanding? With your resources or anything, not suggesting that they will take the place of, of, you know, of course, the people who have to do and implement this, but knowing that there'll be a resource for parents. To turn to in some ways, but is that something that we're doing or could do or?
Yes, definitely. It is a great idea. Um, they both have agreed to be point people for parents, um, this year. And I would be publicizing that as we go into the new year. And I have done two parent trainings on the new I E P. They were not especially well-intended, which sounds like a theme that, that Pam was dealing with, with the parent education series. But they will be available to us as parents with that, as, as will, will all of us. I, it was interesting. We just started using the format and one of the chair people was telling me that it was more. It was a little more, it was a little easier and more intuitive than she actually expected in just transitioning to the new format. So, so far it's going well. I think it, it's very, I think in a lot of ways it's more clear than the other format, um, for parents. But I, I do think that's a great idea. That's a great use of those two people and their time as well.
Nobody's going to show up to the presentation, but when they need to know the information, then they're going to have somewhere to go to.
That's right.
I feel like every time I get one of these emails about a parent ed series, I'm really excited about it. And then most of them tend to be in the evening, which.
which for parents of young kids, it's like total chaos. I know that there's never going to be, no, I would like, almost like, like I've almost feel like lunch hour would be a better time for. I believe that's something we can solicit feedback. That's, yeah, good point. It's just always, I'm always. And we've tried to make, we did in response to things like that, like this year. With a couple of exceptions, we, I would give us A minus. We decided at a uniform start time for evening activities. Now there are a couple that have been topped in based on past tradition. I think it's just from the state or like seven o'clock for the senior awards, but I know they were trying to get kids back from things. So just so people don't like, memorial school doesn't do it one time in the middle of another in the high school. So we had gotten that feedback over the years. Like it's, it's hard to keep track of who does what now. So we went with the uniform start time. So if there's pieces of feedback with that, we're like, you know, it's always good first to hear when we're trying to make adjustments. So daytime, the long time warnings were the opportunity time for PTO meetings. So maybe.
So thank you for the overview and I want to acknowledge and recognize both the scope and the range of activities that are going on and how many, I'm sure that individuals are involved in at once. So I appreciate that. My question, if you step back from the list of things, how would you describe kind of the outcome or the impact that those processes have had? In other words, kind of what's, what's different for student experience or what are teachers doing differently because of these?
My, my piece, honestly, there's, there's not as much of an impact of the student experience as the parent experience. I think with the new IEP, the one piece for students, and I think it's a very important piece, is that every student will be asked to articulate their vision. And that wasn't required in the same way with the old IEP. So whether you're an elementary school child or you're a high school student, we will be asking you to articulate your vision. And I think that will be an important experience. Other elements I think are going to have more of an impact with parents. And my, as for my many compliance tasks that I have had to do as of late, I would say unfortunately the impact on students is not really significant. It's more of a technical exercise that we need to go through. If we were wildly out of compliance and we needed to clean up our act with that, then that could potentially have an impact on the student experience, but it's very much, sorry to say, just more of like a technical bureaucratic process that we have to go through. I think Heather's piece is much more exciting because there is a real impact on student learning and engagement with what you're doing. And I, I'm so proud of my department and everything that we do and the successes we have with students. But some of these technical pieces, it, it, you're not, it, it's not as quality oriented. It's more, it's much more just procedural technical.
But I will say too, is that I think in processing your question, my initial reaction is the impact on students is I think with each activity we're engaging in a global way, students are having a more consistent and higher quality experience. You know, a lot of the parts that we talked about this year about like building like coordinated professional learning across all staff members and how do we create differences based on staff member and staff role needs? But also things like the schedule alignment across the elementary schools and the multiple meetings with that scheduling team and the analysis of the time and is that? So I, I think with each of these steps, I think what students are experiencing is an increased experience, an increased consistent experience, no matter what teacher or building or grade or department they're in. And what I don't mean is everything's the same, but I mean that their experience is more predictable and then it's increasing their ability to do the hard stuff. Right? Because if you're spending your time on the technical, on the compliance or like what rules are here, I think the principals modeled it well today, right? It's like if your attendance is a little different than yours or how you do it a little different, you can get stuck in that instead of like being here matters and what do I need to be here, right? So project that into learning. If we, if our teachers are all engaging in UDL access, then how do we make sure our classrooms are consistently accessible? And how are all of our teachers getting the professional learning where they're at to move their practice forward as the students go through those classrooms? They can expect that whether I have Allison or I have Heather, I have Michelle for my teacher. That experience, I'm going to have access to those in a consistent manner because that's what we do as a district. So I think it's sort of globally, I think it's moving us towards shared expectations of high expectations. Really engaging rigorous work, but like opportunities for continued growth for our students and our staff. And I hope that that just continues to increase. Maybe a little too theoretical. So pushback, it's, it's not appreciated.
I would say some really well over time history. We've moved from a from questioning to accepting and important significant need to work coherently among the realm. So it's very similar to what Heather's saying. Except I'm noticing that the teacher languages and the teacher perspective is catching, has caught up. So we're doing less explaining about why we need to get on the same page. And more how, how can we do this in a way, again, reflect what Heather says, that respects the cultures in each of the buildings, but ensures consistency in expectations and delivery of instruction. I think in the walkthroughs we saw, you know, if you've been around for the process, we are at implementation now out. And how can we do it better is definitely a question, but literacy is no longer in question in terms of moving toward a more science reading based approach. It, it's being exercised and people are trying to figure out how to make improvements and it and do it in a way that creates better results. Because the same thing around the MBS, as I mentioned. You know, third year will be in the third year of the schedule. There's still going to be better ways we can implement that schedule, but I think there's, there's an understanding now of why we do it. So I think it's exciting. I think the, the idea of the instructional coaching will really positively receive, which is a good indicator from my perspective that they're ready, they're ready to focus on that aspect of the work. And then I just think big picture and no data points, but just observationally, students are present and active in communicating and their voice is heard. And while the authentic experiences may not be as structured or unevolved as we want them to be, there's increasing opportunity to, for the student to be the teacher and the student to be actively involved in what they're learning. And I think that's really exciting. And I, it's an exciting time because we also have fresh perspective on that movement. So I think we're in a really great position to kind of launch into this next three year plan. And, and start to see some of the, I think you a lot came on during a lot of foundational work and how now we can build on that foundation. Because I think the cultural competency work has helped them gain perspective around in, in inclusion themes that we've been selling for years. So it's given us, given us another big birthday. So I'm excited.
Thank you. So I think, you know, for comments, I echo actually the same thing, you know, from the three years that I've been here and involved in this. You know, I think you've been sidetracked a couple of different times or there's been competing priorities sometimes, but you know, from what I've seen so far, we're at a point now where it really does seem like we have a pretty solid foundation and I'm looking forward to seeing what celebrating that. Thank you.
The rhythm is back. And I think that's what I heard teachers saying the other day. It's been a year without some major external thing. And it's just been a year of doing the work. We used to do this at the end of every year. We haven't done this at the end of the year since 2019. So it feels good to get back to some of the academic and educational routines we're launching. We could talk about this all night.
All right. So we need to go back to the super funds report.
Yeah. And I can, I'll try not to repeat because they were tied together somewhat. So. Start with a congratulations and class of 24. Great graduation. I wish Julie were still here because I just wanted to give her and, and Liz a shout out. They did a fantastic job. We had, you know, some things to wrestle with during senior week, but I think given what they, what they had to manage, the week was an overall success and juniors are ready to step up and begin their senior year. So that, that was a great week last week and now we have grade five, eight moving on ceremonies coming up next week. I won't do the dates, but pick a night next week and you can see if a grade or an eighth grade will be on sale. So those, those are wonderful. I mentioned already that we got tapped. We are going to get the district review. So like I said, plenty of information to build our district improvement plan in the following year and I can give you a quick update on my goals in a second. But because we talked a lot about what's already in there, I'm going to jump to say, why isn't this working? Just switched to, okay. What I have in front of me is an Essex elementary building project eligibility. That's at nine o'clock because it's eligibility period update. So you know, box check, the building committee has been seated. They will begin work in the late fall of next year. I get a couple of inquiries. So if you do get questions, once we pass through approval to move to the next stage from MSBA, we'll call them in and start the work. And we will reminder, we'll be adding a faculty member to that group in the fall. This feasibility study funding appropriation is complete. It was completed at the end of our last meeting with the vote in Manchester, but that box is checked. We communicated that to the MSBA and now they're sending us the funding agreement documents. It's just paperwork that Michelle and I need to fill out. And we have submitted all of the enrollment data and educational questionnaire. And the educational questions were submitted. So they have everything they need for us to work on their enrollment projection. Now we're just waiting for a call from them for a meeting, could be end of June, July. Every once in a while schedules will, will play into it. But they'll get us in sometime in the next couple of months to kind of go over what they're seeing in terms of enrollment projections for a bill, the design built for the project. That's an initial. And things can change. So we've had to submit everything from building starts to project, long-term projected housing projects. So they're going to put it all through their process and think of some members and that, when we get that report, we'll distribute, we'll distribute that to everybody. We have one more piece that's owed to them and that's the operations and maintenance questionnaire. And it's just some details on our practices. Those practices can factor into additional points in terms of reimbursement. So on the memorial project, I think we got one or two additional points because we had solid practices for maintaining of buildings. So that's things like long-term planning, capital management, having, you know, maintenance cycles and resources to ensure that we, just because you get a brand new building, you don't do nothing for 15 or 20 years. So that's about it on on the building process. I just wanted to get you up to speed there. On the goals, I don't know that you ever officially voted them, but I've been working on these, on these things throughout the year. And they're pretty, I think they're well aligned to the district improvement work that's going on and tries to zero in on my piece, which is kind of to build, really working with the leadership team to build their capacity around. We're doing a lot of work around the student observation piece because to Jake's question, that's going to be our inroad to. That's a tool for monitoring and providing feedback to and for student achievement. So what we're trying to do is reset the table. We have new members. Everybody's coming in with different backgrounds. So we're trying to go, our goal next year is to participate together in a core set of learning around how to do effective observation evaluation. For some of us, it'll be a repeat, but it's been a while. For others, it may be their first time going through that. So we're working, I'm working to identify with Heather, I'm working to identify who's going to be the best facilitator for that work. So we can build on the walkthroughs that we did this year. So we meet about two times a month, sometimes more, sometimes for specialty meetings, but at least one session a month is dedicated to teaching and learning. Through those sessions, we spent time in classrooms. So we're going to build on that for next year. I guess I, I did mention earlier that my goal was 80% of all of the liberals, we hit 78 on curriculum and 77% on districts. So I'll let you make the judgment there. Competitive side says like, didn't make the mark, but I think we, I don't feel like we're woefully behind and I think we are making a lot of forward progress. I, I think the ones I wrestle with the most are the ones that we work together on and it's around kind of what is the best strategy going forward with budget? We'll solve that tonight. And the one I'm actually really interested in working on and committed is the library piece. But with the transitions that happened this year, I had originally envisioned starting it up around November and using the back half of this year and into the fall to try to set a plan in preparation for next year. But that coincided with the obvious departure. So I, I just simply got sidetracked and had to reprioritize. But looking forward to it for next year, it feels good that we've been able to get at least the library VAs to mind the store, so to speak, and breathe some life back in to the, to the library spaces. And I think it's also, I think that step has actually started to engage some excitement. You know, people are having conversations around what it could be. And I think, you know, you've heard me say before, we haven't, this has not been a vocalized priority from any of the principals going forward. I think we're growing concerned just about how the space is being used. But in, but as they're conversing with people, I think their vision of what it could be, because we're kind of stuck in the vision of what it was and we know we don't want that. So I think being able to build towards something new and innovative is going to be our inroad again. You can, on the bottom, I identified the district improvement goals that were going to be my focus area. So you've heard our, our status report on that. That sums it up. Happy to take questions.
Any questions for Ben?
Percentage wise, how would you quantify having to reprioritize based on a new director of finance and operations and new director of curriculum instructional technologies, high school principal Dean, changing elementary principal, changing middle school Dean, finalizing a uniting contract and a new.
Would you say that's two to three percent of a delta? Like, is it legit? You're the numbers person. Do you think that's, that's, that's fair to say that that 77 to 78 is? I don't give it, give it away on that. I think my crazy answer is that's why we have the plan. So it doesn't, where we're going and how we're trying to get there isn't going to fluctuate because Michelle came in and Avi went out. Or Heather or Julie and Liz or Kim shifting up. What's, it's the relationship side, right? So they know what the mission is, but they have to establish the relationships and the understanding of the environment to figure out how they're going to advance the goals. So I think that's where we lose a step. That's why we kind of put some of the things in the, they're, they're going, they're not like, oh shoot, we didn't even think about that this year. It's more like there was just no way we could force this point. So I don't know.
Well, I'll push back and just say, you don't have to pick a number on it, but when we go through this, this whole presentation tonight and see everything that's been accomplished in the last two years from our perspectives and from, from actual, you know, understanding of what's going on. And your reporting out on your goals, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say you've done a stellar job leading us. So thank you.
It's a team effort. And there's a lot that still lives to go. But I appreciate it.
Anyone else, Joe? Thank you. School committee comment?
This felt very productive and solid for Jordan. I think it's really nice to see quantifiable progress that aligns with my kids' experience, that's all. I did have hiring originally on here and then took it off.
Oh, yeah.
One, we're almost complete with one. So, and it's been identified, we did repost for literacy. So they're going through a second round of interviews there, but it's all moving along and I think they're excited about the person they're inviting to join our team. Great. So we will be operational for the bomb. All the hiring is done.
I did have one more small piece of business after the comment. It just got.
Mine is that probably it's getting to it. We have a relatively large summer bucket list. We have not been successful in the past couple of years of meeting that list. I'm wondering how we, that we structure. And I'm not asking to answer it today, but since this is our last meeting before then, how do we get to a place where we can consider that set? I don't have an answer right now, but.
I can give a suggestion.
Just that if we, if we kind of take and review the list, that the idea there, at least to me, is when we put stuff there, then we triage based on like taking a look and seeing these are the things we still care about in the order in which we do that. Some of that can be done. Your email for, you know, that sort of thing. Um but in the end, Chris and Pam are gonna need to meet and um prioritize um how we spend our, our training time this summer together too. And depending on her schedule.
And that's what I'm, so we have August sixth as the workshop day and then time TPD. So is it a three hour morning session? Is it a full day? So that's up for the group to decide. Then my scheduling problems continue. August twentieth, I can't do a night meeting. My family has scheduled something long in advance for that night. And we didn't check that it was the third Tuesday. So I could kind of do an afternoon session if we just need to do some bill paying or business check in. We could try to reschedule it or we could do what we did last year and just push everything to the first September meeting. Because I don't, I don't know if we have a warrant at this point. So because we didn't have a second meeting in August last year. We just didn't have enough people. So sorry for the complication, uh but let's fix it. So I don't know how we wanna approach.
We can uh talk and see, we can organize via email.
People want a longer session, give us a little sense of how to a longer session on the sixth or a shorter session on the sixth. I'm always in favor of shorter anything. However, I will say it's the one time a year that we have the opportunity to really work like, you know, in a big way. So for this, I am in favor of a longer session for, based on.
So I, I, if I remember correctly, last August when we had the workshop, I think uh whether short or long, it might be helpful to know ahead of time if there's gonna be other stuff that is gonna be doing uh that's happening. I think last time we spent a lot of time on the training stuff. Um yeah. I personally didn't, I I personally feel like we should have, I, we could have used more time on the regular work stuff.
You know, maybe you have anything on your list this year?
We didn't, we didn't have anything planned in advance of like bringing Michael back to work with us again. That was a.
That was supposed to originally be a December introductory to kind of what was, we will work beyond.
I also do think that as a committee, we've been together now a bit. So I think that just in and of itself will help.
Do you choose what um, you know, the summer of the list? What's the process to decide what gets discussed at the at this meeting?
It's a very good question.
You literally go.
Yeah, I didn't do any performance, so.
Just in, in general. I was just wondering like, could we have things that would really raise to the top? Should we be emailing Chris or is this Pam? Is it at your discretion? I think I, I remember at some point Teresa having us ranking. Um and I don't think that it was the bucket list, but it was some, something else that we were trying to prioritize. Yeah, and she had us rank them in order of importance and then she compiled that and prioritized based on the consensus.
You could do something like that. I I can't remember what's on the list, but at this point, after like you said, a couple of years, is it worth taking a look at the list in terms of what's something the committee wants to put on? Like, is it, this is, put it on our radar screen and we'd like to hear or learn more about it versus action, like what can you take action on? What is it that's a kind of a curiosity um that you'd like to learn more about? And what is it that you feel like you need to convey because you're hearing a lot about it and don't know where, what, you don't know what to do with it?
And there may be things that some of us do not feel we need to put our attention. And again, when we, when these things come up, we say, well, we can address that down the line. But it, it, some of the time that has meant, we can decide if that's something we need to take action on.
We could just go through a facilitated process of what the heck to do with the list.
Before, before the August workshop or during?
I could.
We can start before.
Because sometimes it's hard to facilitate your own group. So, you know, we have lots of experts who could just come in and for an hour kind of say, okay, you've had this list that's been banging around for a while. What, what's the problem we're trying to solve? Where do these things go? And kind of someone objectively taking us through it.
So the email that you sent out recently for that list, is that the latest one that we can add on to it?
It's the, it's the Excel document that Teresa set up. It's a new tab, same bucket list.
So what's the process? Do we email you? Do we add them to the list or how it's out before the?
The, the list itself is just a documentation of all the things that we've agreed will go into the summer bucket list. I'm hearing something different, which is if you have a, if you have a preference for things to be sure get attended to or that you would like to advocate for, sounds like we should let Chris know what those are.
Yeah, yeah. I think we can do it both ways, right? We can prioritize what's there, maybe drop a few things off. It's not a priority of the committee any longer. And then we can also, you know, we always should be adding to that list. Start, maybe not add to the list necessarily, but at least everyone should be surfacing, you know, what they think could be a beneficial use for our time.
Right, and revisiting the list. Like I'm looking at it now and thinking about where I was when I put some things on this list and where we are now. It's not be relevant anymore.
Can I make a suggestion that give Chris and Kate a minute to breathe on this, to think about it? And then convert with Pam and then come up with a plan that they can then let us know how they want us to give them that feedback?
Question of a process. Um I remember last year, the evaluation of the superintendent was like super late. So it is a specific time that we're supposed to give you the evaluation. Is that, is this summer homework? Is it next year?
We're midway.
Two year.
In a two year cycle.
This is just a bit year or a bit cycle update.
That's why it's not all of the, it's the goals for China, not all of the other things.
Just a last comment. I'm looking forward to supporting this committee this year and or continuing to work with everyone to continue the great work that Derek did. So thank you for your thoughts.
Motion to adjourn.
Call favor?
Yeah. We don't have to go home, but you can stay here.